I'd like to bring to order the February 28th meeting. Of the Tivon Town Council, please stand for the pledge allegiance. Chris has his flag. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
Flag.
United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation under God.
Indemnificable.
Living justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Danick. Present. Counselor Edwards.
Here.
Counselor Viera.
Here.
Counselor Burr.
Here.
Counselor DiMaderis.
Yeah.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Perry.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Consent agenda, approval of town council minutes, February 8, 2022, Joint School Committee meeting, February 14, regular session, Council Perry abstains, absent, February 14, executive session. Planning Board acknowledged receipt of minutes from boards, commissions and committees, Planning Board one, town farm renovation one, acknowledged receipts of reports, Treasurer Shavat, January 2022 budget and revenue reports, Planning Board annual report 2021, Council Report 2021. Acknowledged receipt of correspondence to. Gilfill and Recreation Commission Chairman Letter in Support of COPSCRAP, Tom Razitowski Conservation Commission Letter Regarding Shoreline Setback for New Agricultural Leasing, Referred to CRMC, City of Wind Socket Resolution in Opposition of H6638, An Act relating to Town and City Zoning Ordinance. That's it. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
I would.
Donna?
Yeah. I want to pull D2 and D3.
Anyone else? I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda, taking out D2 and D3.
They're moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
No, go on, Donna.
Motion's been made by Counselor Edwards, second by Counselor Cook, all those in favor, Counselor Danick.
Yes.
Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Counselor Viera.
Yes.
Counselor Burke.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
Yes.
Counselor Perry.
Yes, but I'm going to step away. I'm not feeling well. I'll be back as soon as I can.
All right, Joe.
Good job.
Counselor Cook, D2.
Yes, as Bill has problem, I don't know. Bill's a liaison as I am for the Harbor Commission and the Tivon Conservation Commission would like the town council to consider formally endorsing this new concept from the CRMC where there's a thousand foot. Where you let people know that there might be a lease. So that's brand new. People fought really hard for that. And I was wondering if the, I don't know how Bill feels about it, but I was wondering if the town council wanted to consider endorsing the concept and writing something to the CRMC and to the legislature.
Well, we referred this item to the CRMC.
It looks like he wants something from us, something written. That's what it looks like to me. How do you see it, Bill?
Didn't I thought we had put something in writing to the CRMC a few weeks ago or a month ago regarding notification? Didn't we do that already?
Was that the resolution that Jay put in, or are they asking for something different?
That's pretty much the same thing I put in. Part of it, one piece of it.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, Mike Musella wants to speak.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, I can't find my hand raising. The resolution that Jay did ask for, for amendment statute to require better notice, it didn't specify however, a distance. So this, I think, if I'm looking at this resolution, it looks like they want people within a thousand feet of any lease of the, I guess of the water, of the, a thousand feet of the jurisdiction of the CRMC, I guess. That's how I read it. So we can certainly do another resolution with more specific distances if you want.
Well, recently, the CRMC has endorsed a thousand foot setback, the shoreline, and also letting people know, in fact, one of the oyster farms have pulled their petition and will do it at a later time because of this new concept. I don't know what the Bowen Brothers are going to do, but it looks like when this concept of a thousand feet has gone in where they have to do, notify people that it's effective now. Am I wrong, Mr. Mars, Solicitor?
I don't know. I think it's, I don't know, I'm not exactly sure what you're referring to. I don't know if they're changing their rules or their regulations.
Yeah, they are. Yes.
Yeah, so I'm assuming, Donna, that it was probably in a comment period. I don't know if they've adopted it formally yet, but I don't, I don't know that I can check into that, but.
All right.
You know, they have, they have like rulemaking authority and they have to follow certain process.
Well, Donna, if they've already done this, why do we have to do anything further?
Well, I was just wondering, I mean, it's dated February 17. I'm just trying to, to support, you know, what they would like. I didn't know if we've already done it already, or if they're aware that it's already in the works. I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
I was going to ask if it was a done deal, but just to clarify, this would be like a notice to a butters, so anyone within a thousand, correct? It would not be, could not harvest a farm or, you know, that it could be potentially some kind of a project within a thousand feet. It's just a notification.
I'm sorry, I don't read the letter that way. It looks like it's a thousand, they're looking for a thousand setback from the.
Yeah.
Line, basically, yeah. So it's a little bit more than notice. They're saying that you wouldn't be able to put a, you wouldn't be able to put an agriculture facility within 1,000 feet of the shoreline. So a 1,000 foot shoreline setback would force new agricultural leases to be serviced by boats. They have to be removing the current incentive to locate the leases directly off areas where the public has access to salt and water. So it looks like it's a setback requirement for where to locate them, more than, I'm sorry.
Yeah. So that's different than what?
It is different than what Jay had, yes.
Yeah. Well, in Jay's defense, he did mention it. It is in his resolution. So the thing is, is that with very hard work by individuals in the town, the town Harbor Commission and a group that was newly formed for people with a problem all over Rhode Island formed a group also, and they worked really hard. You should have seen some of the very thick work that went to the CRMC, very, very very hard work was done there. So what has happened is there wasn't anything, then the CRMC proposed 500 feet and some other things, and nobody was happy, and boy, did they hear it, and they came back with a thousand feet. So the, the, one of the other problems with this whole process is that as the CRMC helps the aquaculture farmers, there doesn't seem to be anyone at the table for the public to, to have someone speak for them on behalf of the Rhode, what their trust in Rhode Island Constitution is, is known at the table for them, and that's another thing that they're requesting, that there's actually somebody that's there for us, the public. So if it's not needed, it's not needed. I just wanted to ask.
So we can certainly prepare a resolution data for the consideration of the city, of the town council next, you know, asking for them to consider a thousand foot setback if you want, and they, I'd be happy to do that for you.
I could contact the chairman, Ramitouski, and see what he would like to do. Okay.
Well, aren't they considering it? It sounds like it's a done deal now.
It's just that they're asking us to do something. If you look at the third.
Yeah, but it's not the CRMC that's asking us. I'm not sure.
No.
I'm not sure why Tom's asking us if it's a done deal.
I don't know if it's a done deal. I'm not sure. That I don't know.
Yeah.
So I would just want to get clarity on what the ask is, because I, and I could be wrong, I haven't heard that CRMC is looking to do a thousand foot setback. I have heard discussion about up to a thousand foot from CRMC property, if you will, backwards for notification purposes. So they're two vastly different things. So I really want to get clarity on what it is we're talking about.
I could send you the base amp. I don't know if you want to, it's done in a PowerPoint and it's telling you what they're going to do, what the proposal is. Everyone seems to be pretty happy with it, but maybe we should just wait and see what's going to happen.
I mean, I'm looking for the base amp PowerPoint right now, but I can't find it.
Counselor Viera.
See if, yeah.
I think a copy went to the Harbor Commission. It looks quite possibly like they received it the same day that they had their meeting, February 22. So, you know, maybe we want to wait till the Harbor Commission weighs in on this before we weigh in on this. I'm not sure, seeing that they're kind of somewhat of an advisory committee to us.
Mm hmm. All right.
Maybe, maybe just follow up with them and make sure that goes on their agenda, Donna, and see what they have to say.
Why don't I get in touch with Deb, their secretary, Hagan, and ask her what, how they want to work with the Conservation Commission on this? What do you think?
I think, man, I think we should follow up with them first and then take a stance.
Yeah.
All right, I'll do that.
To be, so I'm looking at their PowerPoint now, and it does speak to expanding from a 500 foot notification distance to a 1,000 foot notification. Doesn't talk about setbacks.
Yeah. So, all right, so I'll get in touch with Deb Hagan on this and see if they want.
Counselor President, I'm just having a little technical difficulties. I'm going to log out and I'll log back in, but I'll be right back.
Okay.
My screen is flickering like a TV screen.
Yeah, I can see it.
Yeah, you're giving us quite the light.
He's got a psychedelic light show going on. That's not why it's happening.
I was just looking at it, saying, what's wrong with Mike?
He's transfixed.
Now, Mike, so, all right, did everyone talk on this subject?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion. So would I understand no action at this point?
No, I'm supposed to get, get in touch with Debbie Hagan on it, correct? I believe.
Okay, yes, yes, but no action from us right now. Okay, so do I, do I have a motion to approve D2?
I'll make a motion to, to approve D2.
Have a second? A second and depth. Motion's been made by Counselor Cook, second by Counselor Danick, all those in favor, Counselor Danick?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Viera?
Yes.
Counselor Burke?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Perry, I don't think he's back.
Yes, I'm back, yes.
Counselor Perry and I'm a yes, unanimous. Counselor Cook, D3.
Yes, I, I sent additional information for this resolution. I think it's very important for cities and towns to maintain their control over their zoning and what's going on. It's been going on for quite a while, but it's really taking an uptick to take over the zoning. They have all kinds of plans. I sent you what, what the real plans are. You're going to be in density areas. You're not going to be able to, they don't want single family homes. That's already started out in the West anyway. I guess my idea was to support the city of Wind Socket for this resolution, and I was, I was hoping that the town of Tivon would do the same thing. I also sent you some historic information regarding what cities and towns were made resolutions in 2014 and 15. Just for, so you would have a little background on that, and Joan helped me with that. I remembered it. I had a piece of paper on it and then I lost it and she, I had the year right, but I just couldn't find it and she helped me with that, and thank you very much, Joan. I appreciate it. I also sent you, I thought it was important to see the House Bill 6638. You probably haven't read it. I mean, it was sent kind of late, but it does says it was attached to this resolution, which of course we don't have, and I thought it was important. So that's my ask is, could we please support the city of Wind Socket and also Tivon's zoning, have control over our zoning by having a resolution that mirrors this?
So Donna's made a motion, I think.
Yeah, I make a motion, I'm sorry.
To support the city of Wind Socket's resolution. Do I have a second? And then I'll do a discussion, discussion.
Can we, Madam President?
Yes.
Can we actually take this up as a vote? Because it's only on for consent.
Yes.
Of basically accepting Wind Socket's.
I didn't put it as accepting. So we can pull any consent agenda and, and make a motion. I think I'm correct, Mike.
Motion for what?
To support our own, to have some help from Mike to put together our own resolution that mirrors this resolution. That's all I'm asking. If, if you so support it.
I think that's different than the motion that I heard before.
Oh, wow.
Well, I understood it that way, but it wasn't clear, I guess, so.
Let me, let me make a suggestion here, since I don't know if any of us have read H6638. I know I didn't, and I want to. I mean, on the surface, just reading this as it is presented, you get a knee jerk reaction that we want to retain, maintain control of zoning, which we do. But I want to see what the, the House bill says and what it really means.
So do you want to table it until the next meeting?
I think we should.
Yeah.
I don't like operating a vacuum.
No, I, I agree. I don't have a problem with that.
I mean, Donna, you spent a lot of time pulling all this information out, in all honesty. I just got it after work. I haven't had a chance to really look at it, so.
Me too.
I would like, I'd like just more time looking at it.
Yep, and, and I'm always for that. I certainly support that. So I would like to make a motion to table this for now till everyone has a chance to look at all of the information that I sent out and have it on the next regular meeting.
I think they have to rescind the first.
Yeah, she has to rescind the first.
Do I got to rescind something?
Yeah, we send you first motion.
Okay, I'll rescind that first motion.
Have a second. I need a second, correct?
There was no second on her motion.
Oh, there wasn't?
Oh, I did, but.
Yeah.
So I'll second to rescind it.
Motion's been made to rescind the motion. All those in favor, Counselor Danick?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Viera?
Yeah.
Counselor Burke?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Now, the next motion, go ahead, Donna.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to have this resolution and all the information that I sent out for the next regular town council meeting for discussion and a vote.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Motion been made by Counselor Cook, second by Counselor Danick, all those in favor, Counselor Danick?
Yes.
Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Counselor Viera?
Yes.
Counselor Burke?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Like to make a motion to accept for D? I mean, for three.
Yeah.
For D3.
I'll second.
Donna, you made the motion. Anybody second it?
Second.
Motion been made by Counselor Cook, second by Counselor Burke, all those in favor, Counselor Danick? Counselor Viera?
Yes.
Counselor Burke?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Oh, mine.
Oh, God. Unanimous. All right, comments received, Maureen Morrow. Maureen's not here, but you all received her letter.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll just accept that. I don't need a motion, right, Mike? No, because it's a comment. Okay.
So just a point, kind of probably an announcement, I guess, that Senator Lou DePomme called and said that East Road has been moved up to this year. So it will be paved in this, this coming year.
The state.
Done that memo, so East Road.
Oh, okay.
He also called me last weekend and told me the same.
Didn't want it to go by without being able to say it.
Yeah.
Good.
She was, if I may, thank Maureen for her public comments. They're always very helpful to us.
I second that, Mike. Okay. Public hearing, discussion, impossible vote on proposed ordinance regarding establishing a town council policy for playing for grass. Does anyone on the council want to comment first? With that said, I'll, I'll open it up for the public hearing. Anyone who would like to comment? We only have five attendees. No one's raising their hand. So you can call in, anyone watching us, 1-877-853-5247. You can also join us on Zoom, meeting ID 864-593-2710, password 555-779. Doesn't look like anyone has joined, but we'll give them a couple of minutes. Meanwhile, is there any comments from the town council?
Madam President?
Yes.
First, a question of the solicitor and then some comments. The way we have this written in the agenda, if we vote on it, it can only be on the ordinance itself, not on the policy, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
This was advertised as a public hearing on the proposed ordinance.
Yeah.
Okay. Just because the proposed policy is attached to it, that's why I missed. Secondly, my only concern is, I, in section A, certainly recognize the obligation of funds, personnel and land. My concern is about other resources, and here's why. Because there are times when in a grant you are offering an in-kind contribution that is already in your budget. And you're simply saying, we know we have to put up $100,000. Here's what we're showing us. And I'm concerned that that limits us in that regard too significantly.
Well, I don't know what you mean, that the in-kind's already in the budget.
So.
Give an example.
Go ahead, Chris.
So the grant we got for a town farm, it was a $375,000 grant. There's a match to it. DPW can do quite a bit of it. So what Mike is saying is because DPW's work, equipment, maybe some supplies may already be in the DPW budget that can be used to offset as an in-kind contribution. So it's services that are being, can be performed by what is already in existence in our appropriation.
Yeah, we also may already have a line item for a certain cash match that we don't have to create new money.
Right.
We don't have to create a new line item, and we just simply say, well, here's what we're using as the cash match that's required in it.
The only thing that concerns me is if the in-kind has not been looked at by, say, the DPW director and the administrator to see if that's something we can do, or if it's, the work is too absorbent that we can't.
That's where I would see that falling to the approval of the administrator, not necessarily having to come to us.
Yeah, I see your point now, okay.
All right, so. So.
So how would we reword that to reflect that, Mike?
Um, we could write something like in-kind contributions have to be approved by the town administrator and the appropriate and the appropriate. Yeah, department heads, thank you. We could, Mike, did you hear me?
Yeah, I did. I mean, for one, I would probably change in that fourth line in A, instead of devote, I'd say allocate funds, personnel, land or other resources. And then have an exception.
Without.
To allow, go ahead.
Yeah, go, go ahead, Mike.
To allow the town administrator to approve in-kind and or I'll call, although they don't always call them the in-kind matches and or cash matches that do not require additional allocations of funds.
I just don't understand what those cash matches would be.
So I'll give you an example from my own work life, and I know Donna's been having her hand up, so I apologize, Donna.
Oh, I'm.
We, we receive a certain amount of money to support older youth in foster care. We also have to show a match for part of that, and what we do is we have obligated to us already a dollar amount in our, in our ongoing budget that we use as the, as the match. We don't go out and ask for additional money for the match. That's what we use as the match.
Yeah, I'm trying to think of what example would be, would be for the town.
So if the town has allocated using Chris's, and I don't have that in front of me, but let's say the town has already allocated from open space to purchase a certain amount of land, okay, somewhere for more open space. And we're going in conjunction with others to DEM for that land purchase. Our contribution is that cash match.
Right, that made it much clearer to me, okay. It would, it would refer to just certain grants. Open space would definitely be one of them.
Yeah, there could be others. There could be others, but.
As far as the cash.
But when there's an open space match, we have to authorize the Open Space Commission to spend the funds out of their bank, if you will.
So it ends up coming back to us anyway.
Yeah. I can give you another one, the one that we're doing down at Fogland, that we're doing some drainage work on, is a combination of nature conservancy, open space, save the bay, DEM, and our. major conservancy, open space, Save the Bay, DEM and ourselves. And as it really starts ourselves, it's mostly all in-kind, but other agencies have funded cash monies to do those projects, so it may not be town cash. It might be other cash that comes into play as well.
Okay, I get it. I'm Donna, you, wait a minute, Donna's been really patient, Deb.
No, that's all right, let Deb go.
Sure, okay.
I, I was just gonna say, kind of on the same idea as Rick, recreation, where they were doing town farm. So they got the grant and they, we had to do matching, so they did some fundraising and some was part of their budget from recreation.
Yeah, and they also did in-kind also down there. Um, Council Cook, you've been very patient.
Well, thanks, not always, but thanks. I'll be truthful.
I'm gonna point out when you are, okay?
Okay, thank you. Um, my concern is, is that the DPW always tries to please. Uh, they work really hard, but sometimes to make everybody happy, maybe, um, they kind of stretch out the staff they have to try to accommodate what's needed for these funds when they only have a certain amount of people to even do what they're doing in town. So that, that's always my, my concern, but after all, Chris is in charge of the DPW along with Rick. And if the two of them decide that they can handle the in-kind, um, I think that's good enough for me, because if they can't, Chris and Rick have a problem, because the work in town isn't getting done, because they're doing this other in-kind work.
Well, at that point, Chris will have to come to us to ask for additional funds or overtime or.
That's what I'm concerned with, it ends up being maybe a, you know, a problem that way, where it ends up costing us somehow. And I don't know how to word it.
I think, I think the way that Mike worded it is pretty sufficient, as long as it says the town administrator's approval. If, if Chris and Rick decides, well, this is way too much for us, we can't do it, then Chris needs to come to us because they'll probably need additional funds, is that correct, Chris?
Yeah. Does it make sense for Mike just to take one more crack at putting the language together firmly?
I'm actually, I'm actually having trouble printing it out, I'll talk to you guys, that's why I'm all over the place.
He's all, he's good.
Mike, you're a hot mess tonight.
I know.
It was all right, I was a hot mess two weeks ago.
Yeah. I got two printers and both of them jammed up, I don't know what happened here.
Maybe you need Mike Burke to go over there.
Michael.
There were screens, not printers.
I, I guess the one thing that Ms. Counselor Burke wanted was that word devote. Maybe that could be changed, what did you want, Mike?
I think allocate is.
Yeah, that's a better, a better word, we could change it to that.
But he also changed a couple of other things, right, Mike?
Yeah, and I'm not sure exactly where to put it, but some language that says something to the effect, with an exception to allow the town administrator to approve in-kind and or cash matches that do not require an allocation of additional funds.
I like that, that's what I like. Mike Marcelo, do you get that?
I don't actually have it, but I get it.
All right, because we can, we can say that we want to change it that way and still go out for advertisement.
Well, this is, this is the public hearing on the ordinance, so you can, you can just continue the public hearing to another date.
But we don't have to do that, right, if we vote, if we decide that we want Mike's addition to it, then the public, then the ordinance has that change in it to go.
Correct. It does, I just want to make sure I understand Mike's changes, I can talk to him about that. I, my, my goal was to print this out so I can make the changes while Mike is talking, but that's fine, if you want to do it, I can talk to Mike later.
Okay, so what I'm saying is we can vote to approve Mike's language with review from the town solicitor, and that's the ordinance that goes out, so we don't have to delay this any further.
Correct, you can do that.
Can I, can I ask a question quick? So the second part of this, the attachment that I wrote out, would this end up becoming like a council law policy?
Yes.
Okay.
The ordinance, and then we write a policy around the ordinance.
The policy was just an example, you can probably adopt that at another time.
Yeah, okay.
So, so Mike, is Mike Burke still here?
Where'd he go?
I think he went to help Mike Marcelo.
No, he's back in the market.
He had to sell somebody some carrots.
I hit one button and I hit.
Get some change or do the MasterCard.
Looks like you're at a store.
I just look at a button and it goes rocky.
All right, so.
Farmer's market.
So, Joe, do you have Mike's changes?
I have, um, the vote, change that to allocate, and then somewhere at the end of A, I got as far as with exception to allow administrator to approve in-kind or cash match that does not, and I didn't get the next word.
I think that does not, um, that does not involve the funding, is that right, Mike?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, when I, when I got kicked off, when I'm trying to send my language to Mike and Joan so they have it.
Okay. Yeah, that would be best.
We can make a motion to add Mike's wording with, with, with review from attorney Marcelo. And put that in the ordinance, and then we can go out for advertisement. But meanwhile, I don't see that anyone has joined that wants, the public hearing is still open. No one has called in, I can tell.
Denise, this is advertisement, so I don't think we have to advertise again, unless you want to do it again.
Oh, I'm, I'm very sorry, you're right, I'm sorry, Mike. I'm trying to keep the dog quiet and pay attention.
I'm trying to pick out a piece of paper for my printer.
No, it's been advertised, we're discussing it, we can make changes and then review them and vote on them later, right?
Or you can hold on to it tonight and it becomes effective.
Yes.
With, as amended, as amended.
As long as there's no, I don't see any public comments, I'm gonna close the public part of this hearing and entertain a motion. And the motion would be to approve this ordinance with the changes that Mike made. With, with review of the solicitor, unless you want me to put it on the next council meeting and look at the wording.
I'd be more comfortable with Mike reviewing this, because I'm not sure if I have it.
Okay.
In a proper.
So now I want to entertain a motion to table this until.
Denise, you're just gonna continue the public.
Continue it, until the next meeting. I got you. So I have a motion from who?
Go move. Perry said.
Okay, so.
I'll second it.
Counselor Perry seconded by Counselor Cook to continue the public hearing until the next meeting. All those in favor, Counselor Janik.
Yes.
Counsel Edward.
Yes.
Counsel Vera.
Yes.
Counsel Burke.
Yes.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Edward.
Already said yes.
Yeah, I know you moved around, so now I had asked again. So Perry.
Yes.
Thank God you guys don't move around during the.
I hate it when he does that.
And I'm, I'm a yes.
Don, could we just state for the record when the next council meeting is, so we have that, so that will be the issue, the next.
The next council meeting, I don't have my datebook in front of me.
Thirteenth.
Yeah.
March fourteenth.
Thirteenth.
Fourteenth, right?
March fourteenth.
Okay.
So the public hearing continues on March fourteenth.
Okay. Appointments and resignations, town farm renovation committee, there's two vacancies. Ryan C. Petra, forty-three Kaufman Road, request appointment term ending six twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three. Ryan, you're here, I, oh.
Yes.
Hi, Ryan. Um, could you tell us why, um, what, what, what your interest is in joining the town farm renovation committee?
Um, well, my interest is in general, just helping the town and using the skills that I have um, to help the town.
Any questions for Ryan?
I appreciate that you're a social worker.
What?
I appreciate his previous background as a social worker.
Yeah, I knew you'd like that.
Yes, almost twenty years.
Well, there's also comments from Stu, um, that Ryan also helped with the first part of the renovation, helped with the fencing. Um, so Stu was able to see firsthand the quality of Ryan's work and the commitment to the project and to the kids in the town, and so I think that goes a long way.
Thanks, yep. Donna?
Yeah, just as I usually ask most people, um, if he's read that part, what, what the, uh, this committee does in the, in the charter, the recreation committee, and this is the renovation committee, but is there any information? It is working with the recreation, but just have some knowledge on the recreation committee also in the charter.
But he's not joining the recreation committee.
No, I know, but I, I think it would be a little bit helpful, because they, you know, their, their recreation committee isn't, is involved in this, but um, it, it's just a thought.
Well, he has been working with them, so I think he probably has a pretty good, better than a pretty good idea of what it's all about.
Yeah, I just usually ask everyone that, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, so I have to entertain a motion to waive our policy in the point this evening.
I'm moved. Second.
I have a motion by Counsel Edward, second by Counsel Perry to waive our policy. Counsel Janik.
Yes.
Counsel Edward.
Yes.
Counsel Vera.
Yes.
Counsel Burke.
Yes.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Perry.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Any further discussion or questions for Ryan? I can entertain a motion to appoint Ryan to the town farm renovation committee uh, term ending six twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Counsel Perry, second by Counsel Edward, all those in favor, Counsel Janet. Uh, Counsel Edward.
Yes.
Counsel Vera.
Yes.
Counsel Burke.
Yes.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Perry.
Yes.
And I'm a, yes, welcome aboard, Ryan.
Thank you, guys.
And thank you for helping.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Um, so the solo ordinance advisory committee, the planning board, um, did finally give us a planning board member that they would, um, that has volunteered. It's Amanda Souza, one sixty, Ledger Lane, and this was recommended by the planning board. And as you're aware, we, we put that, we would like them to be on it, so thank you, Amanda, for volunteering. Um, we still have two vacancies, no, one vacancy, and one is a community member. But we can move forward with this if we, if, if we don't get any further, uh, people who want to be on. So I'd like to entertain a motion to put Amanda from the planning board on the solo ordinance advisory committee.
Do we have to wave on this one, since she's coming from a different?
I don't think so, because it's, she, she, she's the only planning board member, so.
Okay.
So moved.
So I have I have a motion by Counsel Vera, seconded by Counsel Edward. All those in favor, Counsel Janik.
Yes.
Counsel Edward.
Yes.
Counsel Vera.
Yes.
Counsel Burke.
Yes.
Counsel Cook.
Yes.
Counsel Perry.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, Amanda, for volunteering.
Denise, can I ask something here?
Yeah.
Okay, so I know we, we initially wanted to have two planning board members, we wanted to have more public members. Hasn't happened, I request that we move forward with the people we have, not look for any more planning board members. And I may have to come back and ask for an extension on the April thirtieth deadline, I don't know yet, we'll see how it goes. But we're not gonna be meeting until March.
All right, Jay, so I know, um, I think you can definitely move forward, we, we've had this advertised long enough.
Yeah.
Um, and then when you meet as a committee, just, um, I'll put on the agenda if you would like the deadline changed.
Well, you know, well, I, I think Mike can weigh in on this, you know, we'll have a few meetings and see how it progresses, and we'll sort of get a better feel for where we might be going and how long it might take.
Yep.
Fine.
All right.
Agreed.
All right, we'll move on. Board of licensing. Michael J. Rogers, two sixty-four Bogomash Road, requesting special event permit for the annual Courtney Roger Run for Recovery, five K run slash walk event July twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, main date July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, from eight to eleven AM, start and finish at Grinnell's Beach. I do not see Michael here.
Who's not?
Yeah, I really would like him to be here to, to, to talk this with us. Um, Joe?
Yeah, Madam President, I have a problem with that, because it's right during the, um, the beach uh, season, and to have it end at eleven o'clock kind of jams up the gate when we try to open Grinnell's. Um, I don't have a problem with starting at Grinnell's and ending at Town Hall, uh, Town Hall or the Fort Barton School, but I think it creates a problem when it, uh, ends at the gate, especially at eleven o'clock, we open around nine, it, it really creates a problem there. So I'd like to see if, um, he would be willing to change that.
Um, can anyone answer me if this is going to, um, the recreation committee?
I, I don't believe it has, Madam President, I think, um, what the policy was, was that it comes to the council first, and then if we approve it, it goes to the recreation for them to schedule it.
Right, but I agree, I agree with this one in particular, that maybe we should refer to them first, because we've had a, well, all I have to say is we've had a problem with this. And I know for a fact that Mr. Rogers does not like it to end at Town Hall. And he'll argue, because he has in the past. Um, so I don't think we should make a decision until we talk to Michael, but I really do, I really think in this case, the recreation commission should weigh in, because you are right, it's gonna really jam up that beach.
You know, and, and last year, um, Mr. Rogers was very rude and arrogant towards one of our volunteers when he tried to talk to him about, uh, moving it, and, and was kind of a very, very touchy situation, and I, I think, you know, it wasn't really, um, professional of him to, to handle it that way. So I, I'd really like to, um, talk to him, see if we could reconsider this and, and, you know, end it at the Fort Barton or at Town Hall.
Um, and there was also a concern back in the day that all of them were using the bathrooms down there. And as we all know, that septic can only take so much. Um, and the traffic and the parking, because they can't park at the beach, because they're gonna jam up that parking lot. So, um, this has been, this has been a problem year after year. So I think we should make, my opinion is we should table this into the next meeting, send a correspondence to Mr. Rogers to, um, come to our next meeting, and maybe invite the recreation committee to join in our meeting if, if, if they want to. I know Mike was shaking it. Uh, Mike, you have your hand up.
No, my only thing is last year, this is one, actually, this is the, I believe, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, the main impetus for looking at the policy of coming to the town council first, because they felt that they were put in a tough spot um to give permission for the 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 dates, the dates themselves, the scheduling aspect, without the town councils way having made a decision as to whether or not first to approve the event. So I think by asking the rec commission to do their piece first puts them in a bad spot based on, at least my memory, which could be faulty um of last year.
But Mike.
You're right, Mike.
Right, and I agree with that to a point, but we really, before we approve this and send it to the recreation, say you have to do this, we need to know if this is going to cause a problem at the beach.
No, you don't have to say that they have to do it. It would be, it would be saying pending the the decision of the recreation commission regarding scheduling and and any other health and safety issues, let's say that they may have concerns about.
Yeah, but we approved it.
We're, it's it's, to me, it's no different than approving it pending um the approval of the police chief. Well, you know, all legal, whatever the terminology that we use.
Yeah, but.
I mean, we.
I think you're putting them in a worse spot, because I know Mr.
That's not what the discussion was among the commission members.
Well, I'm just talking about this.
But but this is the one that that it came up in in most vehemently.
All right, so if we say yes, you can go forward on permission of the recreation committee. In my opinion, that puts the recreation committee in a worse spot with this gentleman.
And we just need to change that whole process. And I I'm sorry, I just, I hear what you're saying, but, you know, speaking again, I don't know.
I'll make a motion to continue this to the next regular meeting. That way, Mr. Rogers has a chance to um come before the council.
Because in a way, Mike, Joe is giving us the recreation commission's opinion. Without.
Recreation Commission hasn't addressed this yet this year.
But Joe just said his concerns.
Well, I had I had one question that was brought as and sort of brought up. I think, Joe, did you mention it, or Denise did, that they were, that they had been using the facilities at the beach? If they don't have access to the facilities at the beach, where along this route would they be able to do that? And part of this, maybe they'd have to do porta potty somewhere or change the entire route so they could end up where there were facilities.
At one point, we opened, we opened up Town Hall.
I believe last year they put a porta potty at Grinnell's. I believe.
Yeah, but it was at Grinnell's, which is going to be a problem.
Right.
Joe, did they not do part porta potties while we were doing the renovations at Grinnell's too? Because the bathrooms were all closed at that point.
Yeah, I believe they did.
Yeah. So on this special event permit regulations, it says if requesting use of recreation area, which they're not running in the recreation area, but they're going to like start and end there, a copy of the recreation usage application must be provided before submitting the special event application to the town clerk's office.
Have they done that?
So it sounds like if they're going to be using a recreational area, which would be Grinnell's, they would need to have an application from the recreation usage application before submitting it to town clerk.
Right, which the recreation committee.
They're actually using the facilities at are they using the parking lot? Are they using the bathrooms? So they're actually parking in the parking lot?
They did last year.
Oh.
A couple of years ago.
What the discussion was, they were going to park across the street.
Yeah, but they have to get the private place. They had to give permission, and I don't think they did. Well, because because there's a whole legal matter with that. If those people get hurt over there, who's responsible for that parking lot? It's a private owner.
Well, that may got.
But I think that was one of the stipulations we gave them. I thought that was a stipulation that was given them.
I think I've concluded that Mr. Rogers needs to come and talk to us. Donna?
I I just, I just want um let people know that the date they pick actually is the the birthday of this of Courtney, just so you know. Because I remember a couple of years ago, they said, why don't you pick another date? But they're trying to honor their daughter that passed away. So.
I don't think it's July twenty third, because that would be weird that her birthday um is on a Saturday.
It's around her birthday. Well, they, well, I I have, I I'm just going to go by what he said. I'm not going to question that. Um, I remember the hours being earlier because if it's warm, you want, you know, like seven o'clock start and it's done by ten. Um, also, the people were allowed to park at uh Fort Barton School and just walk down uh to the little tented area, and that's where they started and ran and it I don't remember it being such a such a problem, but they do have to, you know, follow policy, so it should it should go back to recreation.
Donna, I have to tell you, the year that it was a problem, I was present because I was at Singing Out Against Hunger event at Costa Roasters.
Sure.
And they had Costa Roast, and the date was the issue that that we approved three things on the same day. And Main Road was a mess.
Well.
Um, we actually had to call the chief and get some traffic assistance down there um because of the problems that it was causing, and it's dangerous down there. People were parking in the, people were parking in the crosswalk. There was a lot going on.
Yeah.
Um, it gets very congested down there.
Yeah, well, I I just like to try to accommodate people in town for using our faci- our lovely facilities and not be making it so difficult. But I do want it to be safe, so I guess I can go back and talk to the recreation and find out what's going on, what they've come up with.
But what Mike is telling us that that's not what the policy said.
No.
It's it's what the commission requested last year when they were running into challenges with approving things that hadn't been approved by the council yet and then running into snags when it came to us because of things that they can't touch. Um, I think Stu might be trying to get in to confirm that, but.
That'd be good.
Do you see Stu?
He's not on yet.
I just think it should be done in conjunction with us. But I don't know how that can happen, but um but if there's a concern, and Donna, I do agree with you, it was like seven to ten.
I just remember it being early and done with, and it didn't interfere with uh.
I would have actually have to say it was around nine o'clock. It was before the gates opened.
Yeah, it was. Uh huh.
Well, you know, and I'll say one thing that, and I hope I speak for all of us. I think we all want to see this happen. We just have to make sure that it's safe and that it's efficient.
Yeah.
Is Stu trying to get on?
I don't see him. Yeah, he was, he was at work, so I I don't know if he.
I agree with Joe. They should probably bring him back on the next meeting.
Yeah.
I think we need to talk to Mr. Rogers, and I have to be, I'm kind of surprised he's not here, actually. Because he always comes.
So I'll I'll make a motion that we uh table this till the next meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, who's going to contact him?
Joe.
Oh, Joe, okay. Thanks, Joe.
So mostly, I think, I think the motion was made by Council Perry, connected by Council Vera. All those in favor, favor to table this, uh, Council Janik.
Yes.
Council Edwards.
Yes.
Council Vera.
Yes.
Council Burke.
Yes.
Council Cook.
Yes.
Council Perry.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
That's the table for the the meeting on the fourteenth, correct?
Yeah. We have a ways. I mean, this isn't until July, so we don't have to make a fast decision.
Stu just came in.
All right, well, you know what? Since Stu made the effort to be here, let's hear from Stu. It's tabled, but I but we don't know if Stu can make it at the next meeting. Hi, Stu. Stu, are you there? You're on mute.
I am. Hi there.
He is.
Hi.
Thank you, Stu.
Have you been listening to the discussion?
Um. So you need one second. I'm just connecting a camera so you'll be able to see me. So I I was listening to a little bit of it, but I apologize. I'm not completely up to speed with what the question is.
Well, um, Mr. Rogers has applied to do the Courtney Rogers one again.
Yep.
And his time is eight to eleven at Grinnell's Beach, start and finish. Council Perry had concerns because that's going to jam up the beach when it opens. Um, and if it ends at eleven, it's going to be a lot of traffic, a a lot of congestion there. Also, my concern is where are they going to park? And I don't remember what we did last year. Council Cook thinks that we made them park up at the school, but I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't, I apologize. I don't recall exactly what the outcome for parking was. I know that um this exact conversation came up, and I'm trying to pull up what our, what we approved last year um from REC, but um I do know that we tried to have them start and finish so that it was prior to when the beaches opened. Um, now, I will say that in the interim, there have been a lot of conversations about fundamentally using Grinnell's or any portion of it at all. Um, and one of the things I didn't realize that he was on the agenda for tonight, um, I think from a recreation standpoint, uh, if there are other alternatives for locations, we would prefer to try to work with Mr. Rodrick to direct it elsewhere. Um, I know in the past, there had been a concern, a couple of years ago, we had him start and finish up by the um the Town Hall, and there was an issue with the direction of the hill. So I'm not, you know, not blind to what he's trying to accomplish and definitely want to support this event. Um, but I do know there were some issues with regards to the beach not being able to open on time last year that were raised by some of my um fellow commission members.
Yeah, and don't you remember one year it was um very congested down there because there was several events going on? And it caused a big problem.
Yeah, and and I think the one of the first years that he did this or first couple of years, um, their Grinnell's wasn't open, so it was a different situation. And then it's been a little bit more of an issue since it's become an open beach. Um, you know, I do want to say that he, I think he does a pretty good job of managing the event as a whole. Um, but from a town standpoint, I don't know that it's ideal to go there, and I I will apologize, Mr. Rogers, listening. We haven't had a chance to connect yet because I, nothing has come before the recreation commission yet. Um, not that it necessarily should have, but we just haven't seen anything.
Right, so if we suggest that he finds another, um, well, we did it at Town Hall one year. Did we suggest once that he goes to Pot and Gray? I think, I think at one point we did. We, um.
I think they would allow that there. It doesn't fit into their.
Yeah.
For use for that land.
He didn't, he did, he's not here tonight, so we need to talk to him. Um, and and also, we would, Donna and I recalled that it was, it was the hours that he's applying for eight to eleven, I thought it was like seven to ten or seven to nine.
I believe it was previously, um, and I also, I did hear Councilor talk talk about the date, and and she is correct that there is some um significance to why he looks to hold it on that date. But it was earlier because we'd had recreation and had the concern about overlapping. I think what we looked at was there might be an opportunity post-race for people to be off to the side and still allow access to the beaches. Um, but again, I think one of the larger questions that the recreation commissions run into is uh the use of the beaches at all and what the stipulations are for that relative to the DEM grant. And he's not on the beach. The event's never been on the beach per se. It's always been on the grassy area to the side, but I do think it'd be valuable to have some clarification on where where the scope of that um, the grant impact lies.
So we're going to table this um until the next meeting, March fourteenth meeting, and Joan's going to notify Mr. Rogers that we'd like him to be here. Um, and that, so I think I'm going to look up what we approved last year too, but I don't remember what that was.
I I can circulate the letter that we sent him on behalf of REC, and then also um I'm happy to reach out to him as well and see if potentially there's something that we could come up with, just, you know, brainstorming a little bit as he comes before the council again. Um, you know, again, not working in official capacity with recreation, but just having done this with him for a couple of years, see if we can help him out.
Okay.
Stu, you have a meeting next Tuesday, right?
Tuesday, correct.
Does it make sense for you, at least just for discussion purposes, to get a sense of your commission on this?
Sure, yeah, I'll have to do it, John.
And just know that Joe and I won't be there because we have a council meeting that night now.
Um, also, we have to be, if we do approve this date, we have to be very careful what else we approve down there at this date. Because we had the arts thing going on. Don't you remember where they walk around to um the different houses? Yeah, the.
Yeah, self go starts.
Yeah, we had that going on the same day. And 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 then we had singing out, and then we had this. And let me tell you, um, I was down there and I witnessed that, and we don't want that to happen again.
Yeah, and I and I think just from a structural standpoint, and Councilor Burke and I have talked about this, you know, I I from the recreation standpoint, we found that a lot of events come before us first and then are given a stipulation that they need to go to the town council, and I almost feel like that needs to be reserved reversed. Um, because recreation handles scheduling based on where locations are, but the approval really ultimately lies with the town council. So um, just as things like this do come forward, I think it probably, this is a nice uh approach or a test case perhaps for us as we go forward.
Well, I I understand why you wouldn't want to approve it. But I think your input before we approve it is important. Because like I said before, if we approve it, and then you guys have many concerns, then what are you supposed to do at that point? We approved it.
Yeah, and and maybe the the crossover in this, and I don't want to take up too much of your time, is to look at events that are recurring events or have been previously approved versus ones that are coming before either the council or recreation for the first time, um, because then it's a new entity.
Yeah, and this has been previously approved, but they changed some of the wording and the time, so that's a little different. All right, so we we have voted to table it. Um, and if you can be in our meeting or send us some kind of a correspondence before the meeting.
Yeah, I'm I'm unfortunately out of town during your next meeting, but I'll absolutely send some notes on behalf of recreation. We'll put it on our agenda for Tuesday.
Yeah, it's it's like Mike said, I understand why you don't want to approve it before us, but sometimes your input is valuable to us.
Could you tell my wife that?
Okay. You know what, Stu? I know your wife. She won't believe me.
She's a lovely woman. She's standing behind me.
She's a good woman.
Yeah, I really like her. All right.
Right.
Thank you, Stu.
Thanks, John Stu.
All right, um, John Skripiak, forty eight Island View Drive. Request approval for annual renewal of private detective license, subject to meeting our legal requirements. He is not here. Is it, this is a renewal? Um, Joan, he lives in Tiverton?
He does. His, he lives in Tiverton and his business is in Tiverton.
Okay, because this has been the only issue we've had in the past.
Yep.
Where they know their business is in Tiverton. Um. Do I entertain a motion or?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve this. Um, he's come before us almost um four or five times in the last few years, so I I'll make a motion. We approve it.
Subjecting all legal requirements.
Yes.
Okay. Second by Council Vera. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor, Councillor Janik?
Yes.
Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Councillor Vera?
Yes.
Councillor Burke?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Perry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. HCC Ed, Mohammed, American Dream of Tiverton Incorporated. Four hundred Main Road, request approval petroleum storage, tobacco dealer and holiday license, subject to meeting all legal requirements. Joan, did a new owner take this gas station over?
Yes, this is a new owner.
It's which owner is quite often here.
Is this the car wash?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, the rubber ducky place?
No.
Yep.
I don't think it's called rubber ducky, Donna, but I really like that.
That'll work.
I think they should rename it. Um. Any discussion?
Well, is this a new owner or is it a corporation owning?
Oh, same thing, it's a new owner.
Like a chain?
Oh, it could be.
Well, is that really our job to determine that?
No, I, I'm just curious.
I just thought American Dream was like he's doing his American dream of owning a business. I thought that was interesting, but anyway.
It does say incorporated. He's from Connecticut. Is this the same people?
Madam President, it was Dr. LoRizano who owned it, and he just sold it to this new gentleman. It is, I believe it's a new owner.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
No approval.
Second.
Oh, who made the motion?
My person.
Excuse me, motion's been made by Councillor Burke, second by Councillor Perry. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Councillor Janik? Yes, Bill?
This is how, what's, what's a holiday license to operate during the holidays?
So.
Yes.
It allows you to operate on designated state and federal holidays. Without that license, you can't do it, you're not supposed to be operating.
Yeah, that's what I thought, thank you.
So somebody gets mad, he can holler.
Made and second, all those in favor, Councillor Janik?
Yes.
Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Councillor Vera?
Yes.
Councillor Burke?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
And Councillor Perry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Town administrative discussion impossible vote to approve the mobile home park license renewal for Datsun Mobile Homeowners Association, DBA, Datsun Mobile Estates, three oh one Bookhamash Road, beyond limited, three months. So we approved this for three months, Chris.
We did, he, I'll, I'll go back to, you know, this project had had a number of ISDS issues that were being reviewed by DEM. There were significant failures, Datsun has gone, had a long history of this, but I'll say that the new, and I think he's fairly new, as their homeowner representative, Steve Delisle, has done yeoman's work in getting four of those ISDS systems designed and submitted, and ultimately, they were just approved by DEM the very end of December, I think it was December twenty ninth of twenty twenty-one. He is ready to go, I don't know when his construction will start, but he has the ISDS as design for those that have failed and are under notice of violation by DEM. And I, he is available to speak, he's here tonight by phone, I think, I don't think he's, has a computer where you can see him. But Steve, can you, can you hear us? Steve?
Amy? Yeah.
So I don't know if anybody have questions of Steve, but he's done a very, very good job. I guess sort of trying to rectify the issues that are there. It's, it's, it is what it is, I mean, it was, it was a long process. Originally, we thought they were going to stop this project in November, but it, you know, he still hadn't had the permitting done by DEM by then.
Steve, I want to commend you for taking over a long time problem and an issue that we've had concerns with, thank you. Any questions for Steve? Councillor Janik?
Uh, so the, were there four septic systems that were failing?
There were four individual lots that were failing, and I believe he's putting in their design systems that will accommodate all four of them.
Okay, so then that, that whole park should be fine then after that.
So th- these are the ones that DEM had cited notice of violations on. So he, I think Steve recognizes that there may be some, somewhere down the road that they may have additional issues with, but he's going to work as hard as he can with DEM, once there's a notice of violation. Right now, these are the only four that DEM has an issue with.
Okay.
Is that correct, Steve?
Yeah, good boy. He comes and goes.
Steve, that's correct, right, there are only four lots currently under notice violation.
Steve, you're on mute, and I can't figure out how you did that on a phone.
Chris, Chris, you should be able to unmute him. I can only ask to unmute him. No.
I don't, well, let me try, Mike.
Unmute, how about now?
You're good.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
You'll make a bad commercial.
There it just, there it goes.
Good, good.
Oh.
Okay, Steve, so there are only four under notice of violation from DEM that you're trying to correct right now. We lose them all together?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Steve, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So the question that we have is the only four, you only have four currently under DEM notice of violation that will be fixed with these plans that you have already approved?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. There are no other ones beyond these four that have a notice of violation?
Not so far.
Okay.
So what we're doing is we're going for the, a loan for the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, through PPL program from the DEM.
Okay. So do you have any estimate as to when you'll start this project as far as construction?
Uh, this is going to be started in the spring.
Okay.
So it's going to take care of four units right now.
So in the meantime, you're pumping these places, correct?
Yeah, yeah, whatever needed.
So, so he is rectifying the issue, he's trying to make sure that it's not a health and safety issue. Uh, he's, he's got the permitting done for it, and he's in the middle of getting a loan from the Infrastructure Bank, and there's a lot of that money is available right now through the American recoveries monies. So I would recommend that his license be extended at least for the remainder of the year. The fiscal or calendar, Chris? Um, I think we're on a calendar year, correct, Joan?
Yes. No, these.
Make most.
These expire November thirtieth.
Okay.
Of, of each year, so it would be through November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
Make a motion that we extend the mobile home park license for Datsun Estates through November thirtieth of twenty twenty-two.
Second. Second, okay.
I'll second.
I hear you, Deb. Motion's been made by Councillor Burke, second by Councillor Janik. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Councillor Janik?
Yes.
Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Councillor Vera?
Yes.
Councillor Burke?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Perry? Joe, you are?
Yes, yes.
And I'm a yes.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Jay, every time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Jay, every time we allow someone in.
Good night.
All right. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, general business, discussion impossible vote to approve National Grid, joint poll petition, now quit lane, polls five and six. Chris?
I would, this is, this is from National Grid, I would recommend approval.
Every time they put a poll up, they have to check with us. Not that we've ever said no.
There is a, a letter from the DPW director that says he doesn't have a problem with it.
Right.
Okay. Do I entertain a motion?
Make a mo-, make a motion and be granted.
Second.
Second, okay. Motion's been made by Councillor Perry, seconded by Councillor Edwards. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Councillor Janik?
Yes.
Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Councillor Vera?
Yes.
Councillor Burke?
Yes.
Councillor Cook?
Yes.
Councillor Perry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Councillor Janik, discussion impossible vote regarding authorization and funding to video record, planning board and zoning board of review meetings. Deb?
Okay, so, Councillor Edwards and I are the liaisons to both the planning and the zoning. And when we're live, we probably are two of the only visitors who ever sit in the, the waiting room. Since we have gone on to Zoom, I think that the attendance has increased a little bit. And these boards are really hearing some major projects. Projects that really will change the face of Tiverton for the foreseeable future. Solar, solar ordinance will go before them. The, um, the new project with all the homes, they're having hearings on. So I think it's important for people to be able to be part of this, to be able to see it, to be able to listen to what's going on, to be able to offer opinions on that. So I did talk with Andrew Rice a little bit, and some of the issues right now, as we stand, is the limitation of the availability. It's really the Rice family who is doing all of our recordings at this point. The planning board meetings often are at the same time as the school committee. So there's finding available technology and available personnel to do that. There are some opportunities because of the way that technology is advancing, that they could be able to do something at Town Hall where they could train someone to kind of push a button for, on a laptop. So as Steve Rice said, it's, a tricky part would be when they're going into executive, but neither of these boards go into executives, so we might be able to appreciate a little bit of the technology there. There would be some cost to it, so I'm not prepared at this time to tell you what that would be, but I just wanted to see what the council's thoughts were. I think it would make us more transparent for planning and zoning. They're very important commissions, and I'm hearing from people that they're enjoying watching them. I think they like watching them from their home, and on nights like tonight, I don't blame them. So to sit at home in your, in your comfy clothes with a hot cup of coffee is kind of nice. But I, I think it would be great if people have the opportunity to either watch it recorded live or to be able to watch the recording later on when they have time. So I'm, I'm really looking to see what the council's thoughts are on that, if we might be interested or have money available somewhere, Chris, to be able to do that.
I think the, I think the contingency fund would be where we get it, but Chris?
Oh, I just want to make sure we're clear that, what we're talking about, and I think, I don't want to speak for you, but I, I want to understand your request is to livestream these meetings, but not have a participation entity, kind of like a Zoom thing. Kind of like what we were doing at council minute, council meetings well before COVID. They were always on YouTube videos, the school board was always on YouTube videos. People could view it at any time after the meeting or during the meeting if it was up in livestream. But if you wanted to participate, because what's going to happen, we're going to wind up going back to, I think, uh, uh, meetings in public again. I have no issue with, you know, having them livestreamed, and we can figure out how to make that work. But if we're going to add a component of having a hybrid where people can communicate, ask questions via medium, that's a whole different issue. But if it is just live streaming, I'm pretty sure between the Rice brothers and here in town, we'll try to figure out some way to make that happen.
Well, also, if you think about it, it's an advertisement of what they're talking about. So my, what, what I think will happen, well, people will come to the next meeting because they'll have something to say like they do with the town council meeting. Do you agree, Deb?
Yes.
Yeah, very possibly. Because as it is right now, unless, as, as Deb said, particularly with zoning and planning, and to some extent, it's going on now, the Harbor Commission. You know, you, you don't get to see it live, you get to see it in the minutes when they get around the publishing minutes, which can be quite some time, unfortunately. I've had a lot of conversations with Chris about this. You know, he's, 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 he's got a vision of how we can get there and how we'll fund it.
Well, I think people are not looking for minutes, like the, the average person is really not checking to see when the minutes are posted. They are looking to see if they can switch on their TV to YouTube and can catch that meeting livestreamed or watch it later during the week if they can't get on it live.
They're just looking to see all the sausage just made, that's, you know, it's.
Right, I think a lot of them aren't even interested in speaking, but if they at least see it, they may, and they may come to the next meeting. But I think, to be transparent, I think that we need to have it available for people.
Okay, Councillor Cook has her hand up for a while, Donna?
Yeah, for, for Deb, I, I've always been for transparency. The conversations in the past about this has been where we're going to get the money, so, I mean, if you have the money, I guess it's, it's fine with me.
What does it cost to do the town council meetings?
So, uh, uh, he gives a really good break, so. He gets like fifty dollars a meeting, and, you know, I would not want to hold him to that. Um, I mean, he, they've been very generous with the town throughout all the years, they've been doing it, but I would ask him for a financial proposal to do these.
So this is what I suggest. Does any, does any councillor have any objection to going forward with this? So what I suggest is that we have the town administrator, reach out to Steve, get us a price, and I'll put it on the next agenda. Um, I think we can allocate the funds from the council contingency. We do have funds in there, and that's, that's historically what, what some of the reasons we've used that for, because we, we did that for the budget committee, if you remember. The budget committee wasn't televised a few years ago, and we televised them in the first year was when we took it from the council contingency, then put it in their budget from that point on. Or we could always add it to their budget right now for next year, and for the rest of the year, just take it from the council contingency.
I agree.
I do, I do want to say, Denise, that.
Well.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be an increase in the cost, but it'll be money well spent.
Right, Councillor Burke's had his hand patiently up, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, so I had it up before you asked if we object, my hand was not up for an objection.
All right.
Um, the only concern I have is, you know, we can take it out of contingency now, but I would want to know a path forward in terms of funding it in the future, because the last thing I would want to do is start it and then stop it because we didn't think about how to fund it going forward. Because that would, that would be the worst thing to do, I think.
Well, like I said, Mike, they'll have a budget item. So the zoning and the planning will have a budget item on their budget, and that's how we'll allocate it, but then.
I understand, that's how we would approve, that's how we would recommend it be allocated, yes.
Okay. Uh, Mike Marcello has his hand up.
Thank you, so I just wanted to, so, just so you know, so there's no confusion about this. Livestreaming, zoning and planning board meetings is great to just allow people to watch what's going on, but the law is very. But the law is very clear that they, they have to, unless you're in COVID, if you're going to, if you're going to speak far against an application or, you know, part of a public hearing, you have to be there. So I don't want to give people false hope that they can sit at home and suddenly participate in a zoning or planning board meeting. They have to, they have to go in person.
Mike, this will help the argument of we didn't know this was going on. We have no idea what's happening. Um, well, it's, it's been livestreamed and it's very easy to watch. So this will help because we get that a lot. I didn't know this pro- project started. I don't know what you're talking about. Well, one of the things we can say is we've, we've made a better access to people to get knowledge about this. So do we have a motion to refer this to the Town Administrator to get a price from the Rice family? And then to come back to us at our next meeting?
Don't move.
Second.
So I have a motion from Councilor Janik in a second from Councilor Edwards. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Councilor Janik?
Yes.
Councilor Edwards?
Yes.
Councilor Vieira?
Yes.
Councilor Burke?
Yes.
Councilor Cook?
Yes.
Councilor Perry?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you. Councilor Burke, discussion impossible vote regarding amendments to audit Section 2107 Casino Gaming Revenue and setting dates for, for future public hearing.
Chris, you might want to bring Denise Saret into this.
I'm sorry.
Discussion.
Hang on.
That's okay. Thank you, President. Uh, the solicitor and Denise Saret and I, Treasurer, um, met last Friday. Did a lot of work on this. And let me just talk you through it. Denise was extremely helpful with some of the language around funds and the like. So again, it puts all revenues or payments from the state of Rhode Island into the Casino Gaming Fund account. That would be inclusive of sports betting. And then within thirty days at the end of the fiscal year, the Treasurer would record twenty percent of the receipts for the prior fiscal year. So we'd always be looking at what we have for the previous year, not in the current year. To the unassigned general fund account, which is the correct terminology for that account, until that equals ten percent of the current fiscal year's operating budget. So there was some discussion about wanting to move that incrementally. And in our conversation on Friday, um, this, so to modify the minimum requirement, that would be, require a modification to the charter. So if we wanted to do that, then I would think having it gradually done would be appropriate. You go, you know, let's say it's three, I know it's three percent now. Next year you might go to four or five, et cetera. But for this purpose, you're simply saying that we're taking twenty million, twenty percent of whatever we get from the gaming revenue and automatically putting that twenty percent aside into the unassigned general fund account until we hit ten percent of the town, of the full operating count, right? Denise, the full?
Yes.
Town and school? Yeah, so right now it's about fifty-four million-ish. So that'd be about until it hits five point four million. And then we wouldn't put any more casino gaming money in. And that's going to fluctuate. It's not going to be a hard number because she's pulling money, you know, out of that to pay bills and things like that. But, you know, just, you know, in general, till we get to that point. Um, and then I'll talk about what happens after that in a minute. That money, by the way, could be used by the Budget Committee or the Town Council in developing the budget to set towards, um, the general expense, the operating, you know, the expenses of the town, whether it's capital or operating. Then C, we take the additional eighty percent and split it two ways. Um, I had some different terminology in there, which wasn't really working out. So basically we're saying forty percent would go into a short-term capital projects as determined to be funded by the Town Council. The thought process there is that these are things that really need to be done pretty quickly. And, uh, that, they may be emergency, so it could be that, you know, I think somebody on our call, um, used, you know, if a roof collapsed in a building, well, much of that might be covered by insurance, but there is likely other costs that may need to be covered, such as the, the coke. But it's also for things like, we know that in the next five, two years, we're going to have to replace this bridge. And we want to devote this money, you know, to this bridge. As opposed to some things that can be more planful, we can really do a capital projects plan and, and look ahead at what is likely to be needed over a four, five, six-year period. We might decide to keep money in that fund to be able to accumulate it for a future purpose. But that's more long-term. And then if you look back at B, once we hit that ten percent, we'd split whatever is remaining between those two funds in C. So let's say, um, in three years, we hit ten, well, we'll probably hit ten percent in about five-ish years. So in the sixth year, um, maybe we have to put only one percent in, and the remaining nineteen percent gets split between the two other funding funds. It can only be allocated and expended after the fiscal year in which the town receives the revenue, with the exception of any emergency need upon a supermajority vote of the council. And then within thirty days of the close of the fiscal year, the Treasurer would give us a report in writing about the amount that we have available. Following receipt of that, we do something similar to what we did this year. We'd meet with the Town Administrator and the School Committee to discuss capital needs to be funded through Section C1 and C2. Um, and then, um, we approve any funding, any project funding uh, through a resolution or resolutions of the Town Council. It also says it doesn't require us to spend any funds in any given year. We can, again, um, hold them for future use. And it will repeal what's there now in its entirety. Mike, Mike just felt it was cleaner and easier to follow if we just did a substitute for it. And you have attached the current ordinance, um, and it will become effect upon passage.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, the twenty percent, I kind of was looking that once we got to the ten percent, that twenty percent still went into the general fund to alleviate tax relief. Um, because I'm really confused about the other two. So, short-term capital projects, I thought would be what we're doing now. Where the School Committee, where we gave the School Committee two million this year and we took a million. I thought that would be short-term. Am I wrong?
So my head is this way. Let's say, um, well, the School Committee has a plan. Okay, Chris has a plan, some of it's being covered by ARPA money and others. But there are things in that plan that will need to be done over time that aren't covered by ARPA. But we don't have to do them immediately, or there will things that, that have to come up that we don't have to do immediately. So we, we try to map out a capital spending plan. Um, within that capital spending plan, there would be short-term things that we want to do more immediately, either because of the possible urgent nature of them or it just makes sense because we can tack one to a different project and it just makes sense to do it, um, at the same time. That's where that short-term funding piece comes in. And then you have the longer-term.
Like, what? So give me an example of a longer term. A medium to longer term.
Again, it's, I, I, I don't know that I have an example unless Chris has any. It's really about looking in a planful manner across time, what we want to do this year versus next year versus the following year, so that we're not always, um, looking at the immediate.
So virtually what we're doing is putting eighty percent into the capital project.
Correct.
I, I kind of like the idea of paying off some of our debt also.
I don't think this would disallow that, but we can certainly address that if we need to. I defer to Mike or Denise, if, the way this is written, it would disallow debt payment.
Well, what I was thinking was, um, for example, the fire truck. So if we decided we wanted to just pay that off instead of doing, um, the payments and saving on the interest, could we do that?
Yes, I think so, yes.
We could.
Yes.
Um, and, and anything else that we have left over? Such that, I'm not sure what we have. I'd have to look at the budget. But, um, any other payments that, any other projects we're paying on right now?
Streetlights would be one.
The lights would be one. Thank you, Denise.
That, that's the longest-term one that we have right now. We have five more years on that one.
What?
The other, the other ones are pretty short-term.
What lights, Denise?
The streetlight conversion.
Oh, yes. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes. Um, something like that, so that we don't have to pay interest, which would reduce taxes also.
Right. Denise, getting back to your original question about, um, the twenty percent, once the, once that fund reaches ten percent, and because the charter sets, sets a minimum of, of three percent, that delta, the seven percent delta could be used to be used to fund, you know, general, general revenues, general expenses of the town.
Well, what I would like this to say, that twenty percent goes into the general fund. And once it reaches, and I think you're, you're very correct. I think we should do like the first year, five, four or five percent. Second year, eight percent. And then maybe by the third year, we get to the ten percent. But once we get to the ten percent, I would still like some of this casino money to go into the general fund to help with the budget. If we need.
So, and I, and I think Denise, correct me if I'm wrong in my understanding. So generally, I think we estimated that it would take roughly five, three to five years to get to the ten percent in the general, in that unassigned general fund.
Agreed.
There will always need to be money from this casino funding to go back into that fund because of the way it churns. And it's going to dip below ten percent at some point. And maybe it'll slightly go above ten percent. But that money will, whatever is remaining in there above the three percent, at least at this point in time, unless the charter's ever changed to raise that floor, is available for funding the, the, the budget, the regular budget.
Right. And that's why I don't like C. Because C is saying that once we reach ten percent, it goes into these other two accounts. It's not clear to me.
I am comment.
No, so I'm sorry Denise. So they're separate and apart. B is the, first you take twenty percent. You put it into the unassigned general fund and you let that grow. And, and once it hits ten percent, there's money left each year. Additional money left each year. C says in any, every year, that remaining eighty percent gets split between these two pots. Plus, if we're in a year where we're already hitting ten percent in the unassigned general fund, what is, and let's say there's, you know, fifteen percent left of the original twenty, then you put that into, um, one and two, C1 and two. That's what that's saying.
Right. And that's what I don't agree with. I think it should still go into the general fund for tax relief. And that's, that's just my opinion. I don't think it, I think forty, I think eighty percent for capital is fair. But I do think that we should put some into the general fund for tax relief. And I do know that, that the taxpayers would agree with that, I think.
But we are, I just want to be clear. We are putting money in there for tax relief purposes.
Yeah, but I don't, but then once you reach the ten percent, it's going to go down into these other two categories and I don't agree with that.
Right. But you're, you're, what I hear you saying is we're not putting money in there for tax relief purposes. We are. That's the first thing that goes in for tax relief purposes. It can be used for tax relief purposes.
Yeah, but once you reach the ten percent, then the casino money no longer goes in here.
Yes, it will. There will always be money going in there. It may not be that full twenty percent. But there will always be money going in there because you're keeping it at ten percent.
This is just my opinion. I think that twenty percent should always go into the general fund. That's just.
And I appreciate that. I just want to be, I, I have to be clear that we are putting money into the unassigned general fund for tax relief purposes.
But once you reach, get to the ten percent, the casino money is only going to be there to bring it back to the tech, to keep it at the ten percent.
Correct. Correct. But the money, anything above three percent, anything between three and ten percent is always available to the Budget Committee, to the Town Council to allocate towards general operating expenses towards the budget.
I agree.
And then if you used some one year, then the following year, you would be replenishing that. So you're still, you, you're funding that tax relief.
Right.
On a continual basis.
I would feel comfortable if C was just taken away. I don't think there's a need for C.
Then what are you going to do with the rest of the money?
It's going to go into the general.
I, I think, I think.
Oh, I mean, no, any remaining funds after the application of Section B.
I think you mean D comes out.
Yeah, D, she means D, you mean D.
I need, I, yeah, I mean D. Yes, I think D should come out. I don't, because if what you're saying, it's always going to go, D shouldn't be there. I don't think we should.
I'm sorry, let me try to drop. So D, again, this is, I'm not, I'm not, this is a policy decision, but I'm just saying. So you could say that when the unassigned general fund reaches ten percent except for from Schedule B, the additional casino general gaming fund shall, shall be, you know, shall be allocated to the, to the, to the what, the what, to the.
So.
Fun. Is it, I, I think.
So it's already in the general fund. Yeah. So I think what, what, to clarify, what you would say is shall be utilized pursuant to the Town Council for tax relief or to then be set forth. So it gives the council discretion to use it for tax.
And Budget Committee.
Yeah, I'm sorry. What's going as well?
I don't think we should put D in there at all. Twenty percent goes into the general fund and forty and forty. I think twenty, and I think that just makes it clearer to me. But that's just my opinion. Jay, you've got your hand up patiently.
Well, as everybody here knows, I have always been diametrically opposed to using any of this casino re- revenue for any operational expense. Uh, I don't know if anybody has been reading or has read all the documents we got from RIDE in the past couple of weeks. But there is currently an enforceable requirement that we spend a good deal of money on school maintenance. And we get to pick how we're going to do it. We don't currently budget that. It's going to come to haunt us pretty quick. And like Mike says, we don't want to spend it until it's in the bank. And then we want to be very careful on how we spend it, what we spend it on. If we spend it on capital and something goes wrong, it doesn't kill you to not spend on that capital item that you really wanted. But if you pumped it into operations, it's gone forever.
Um, Deb, do you have any comments?
Well, I, it was a question more, when we talked about debt relief, I'm just looking at some of the items that we have, and we do have the streetlights. I know the bonds, Denise, we're, we're kind of maxed out on changing that, right?
Yes, there's, there's, the only thing you could do in terms of, and I've got finger quotes going here, debt relief with the bonds is if you were to set aside some of the casino gaming revenue to make the bond payment. But you can't pay off the bonds, can't refinance the bonds. You could just say, okay, I want to use a million dollars of casino gaming revenue to pay off a portion of my debt service this year. But, you know, that's. You know, that's, that could be a little bit precarious in the event, the following year, we don't realize. The, um, gaming revenue, then you have, you know. Really caused quite a spike or a, a, an elevation in the operating expenses for the following year. So, I think everybody knows that I'm a proponent of using this, like Jay said, for anything other than operating. But, one thing to keep in mind with this ordinance is, we've always wanted to grow our unassigned general fund. For many reasons, um, it's just, it's, it's. The GFOA recommends that we have something higher than three percent. Eighty percent of the communities in Rhode Island have a minimum of eight or more percent, so we've always been on the low end. So this is one mechanism where we could at least gradually increase that part of our fund balance. And then see what happens, um, but, yeah, that's my two cents.
Thank you Denise.
You are. So, as I'm looking at what we have, it will be the streetlights. Um. Because we're on the, the six out of ten payments, and the last payment on. The plow truck.
Yes.
And the fire truck.
And the fire truck, right?
You're talking about the new fire truck?
Yes.
Yes, the ten payments on that one.
Are the other fire trucks paid for?
Yes.
Yes, that one's paid for and the new one not, I think we've only done one payment on the new one.
Yes, yeah.
So, um. So, that money, if we were to do that debt relief, is that coming from? Like the medium to long-term capital projects, is it coming from like that? Forty or eighty percent that, that we're putting us into capital projects, or are we taking that out of the general funds?
Is that a question for me? Or Mike?
I don't, I don't think it's clear.
The intent in, in that.
Cause I, I'm.
Again, the intent, the intent is for that shorter term to be things that need to be done fairly quickly. The longer term is for things to build in, it's really about building a capital plan. And then saying, okay, and knowing that it's going to change based on who the council is, but. You know, us being able to say at least the years that, you know, for next year, if we have a capital plan, we can say, okay. These are the things that we want to do right away. These are the things that we want to do later on, and we'll just, you know, earmark those dollars for that. We can play around with that, but that was the intent, it was really, so we don't spend, so. It was really intended from my perspective to say, look, there's also times when we might have to. Pay for something more immediately because of whatever reason, and. We don't, we need the money to do it, and that's where that little kitty would be, could it be lower? Sure. Um, but I'd hate to be in a position where we have. An urgent and or emergent issue that comes to us, that's going to cost us two hundred thousand dollars. And we're not going to have that two hundred thousand dollars and it has to be taken care of pretty quickly.
At that point, couldn't we take it from the general fund because it's an emergent?
As long as it's not over five hundred thousand dollars.
Right, right. I just, it's just a question.
Well, I can give you an example maybe, and like, you can tell me if you were thinking along these lines. A, a medium. Item. Ambulance. You know, we know we need one of them every three to five years, and we know what they cost. And we also know that there are deals to be had. That you could lose while you're playing around trying to find the funds, it happened with the Quinn. We lost the first one, we did get the second one. Uh, you know, there's, there's all kinds of ways to save money. That include having the cash available at the time.
I guess I'm, I'm thinking, um, the schools probably have. That plan because they had things that had to be done, their siding had to be done, their dishwasher had to be done. But they've got other things like their locker rooms, their bleachers, whatever, more long-term. So, thinking more like that, and. I, I'm not critiquing your idea at all, Mike.
It's fine, that's what it's there for.
I'm just trying to get it in my head, like what. Where we could get what we need. Um, you know, what we, what we need for items. So, the, the, um, DPW equipment, the police, the fire, that really should be. Changed over more frequently than every ten or fifteen years. If we kind of put them more like in the medium, because we're thinking about it a little bit longer down the road. Um, but we could have the cash in hand and get a better deal. Or have the cash in hand to go for grants, like Police Chief has been doing.
Yeah, and, you know, again, I appreciate that, that you said, you know, you don't want to critique, but that's what this is here for. Um, and I'll, you know, reiterate what Jay had said and, and. B is in there honestly from my perspective, because that's what we had discussions about. Among the council, and there was certainly a strong interest to put money away in that B category. Personally, I don't think this money should be used for operational expenses at all. Um, but I know I'm only one voice on the council. Um, I think the best way to provide tax relief is to use this wisely to offset costs related to capital. Um, we can decide that we just want to have one other fund for capital and that's fine. I, you know, that's no skin off my cheek, this is really intended to get the conversation going. And the only thing from my perspective is I would hate to see us jump at simply throwing each year's money. Each, simply allocating out all of that eighty percent in any given year. If we know that the next year, we could use. Two hundred thousand of that from that year and two hundred thousand for the next year to buy something that we need to buy. From a capital perspective.
And that helps me put that in my head and organize it. Um, I don't, I don't want to use, you guys keep jumping around, Mike, so the right now, um. I, I don't, I don't want to use it for operational because. Ends up like we were a couple of years ago when we didn't have casino money coming in and we were kind of planning on having that. Um, I don't want to do that either, and I've always thought that our three percent reserves was way too low. I know Denise said most towns are in the eight percent, but there are some that are at twelve and fifteen. So I'm not to go that high, but I think that we need to have a little more cushion. For a rainy day because you just don't know what's going to happen.
Well, with three percent, we can run the town for three weeks.
All right. Um, Bill, would you like to weigh in?
I, I don't, I don't know that I have much more to add since our February fourteenth meeting, the only two questions I would ask. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say, Mike, thank you for spending the time to construct this. Uh, Denise, everyone, thank you for trying to look ahead and trying to plan for the future of Tivon, so I do appreciate that. Uh, Mike, maybe just some kind of generic questions, uh, the forty percent short term. We, we've been using town examples, um, but I'm assuming we could also use that for school. Capital needs.
Yeah, yeah, so what I had said, the school already has, you know, a plan, we'd look at what their plans are, they'd have to prioritize for us. Um, when we have that conversation generally in the fall, and then we do, and Chris would do the same with a plan for us.
Okay.
To the town side.
And then the, um, the forty percent for the medium to long-term capital projects. Um. This kind of semantics, but. We would have to let, not touch that for a while in order to, so I'm just wondering if you would have to add some kind of. Wording or caveat to say, we can't touch that for a few years because. What is medium and what is a long-term project? Um, I'm just wondering if you have to add some kind of, we cannot touch this till twenty twenty-four or something to that effect. In order to make that grow a little bit more, I, I'm just, it's just something that speed it over.
Yeah, so two responses to that, one is, from my own perspective, I think that would be a wise thing to do. I don't think that we. Are at that point yet. Um, secondly, there is, however, there is language in F. Nothing hits looser language at the bottom of it, at the end of it, nothing here requires the council to expend any available funds from these accounts. Um. But at no time shall we have the authority to transfer any of these funds to the unaside general fund. Or to cover operational expenses for either the municipal government or the school department, so that's speaking to the funds that are in C. Um, specifically. So we don't have to, so if, if we have money in those two column accounts, they're generally not, you know, real accounts, but. Uh, from an accounting perspective, we can let both those sit there and accumulate. Because we know that we have a couple bigger things that we want to address. Um, we just can't. Take the money that, we can't right now today, if this ordinance were in place. We can't say to Denise, right, okay, Denise, how much money do we get from the casinos so far this year, let's say she tells us five hundred thousand dollars. There are four hundred thousand dollars, okay, we can't say, okay, we want to allocate that four hundred thousand dollars to X today. Unless there's that emergency that's covered in E. And that's a super majority vote. And I'm not wedded to the two forty percents, if we want to make one account, that's fine. I just think we have to be more playful than in our discussions.
Well, if you wedded them together, it, it gets rid of the semantics between medium and long, or medium and short.
So it'd just be eighty percent should be recorded and restricted to address capital projects as determined to be funded by the town council. If that's what folks wanted to move forward with.
I mean, I like your five-year and ten-year plans, Mike, I'm just, like you said, town councils may come and go and. What, what is short-term may be medium to long-term defined by others, I, it's just, it's a little bit confusing.
Yeah.
Hey, um, Donna, do you have any comments?
No, thanks for asking though.
You're welcome. I don't think Joe is with us. Joe, are you there? No, I think he had a leave.
He's all right.
Um, yeah, he just texted me, um. Okay, so where do you want to go from here?
Chris has, I have a question for Denise, can I just ask Denise a question, Denise Sarah?
Uh huh.
Denise, if we were to get rid of D. Right? That money, so once you hit ten percent and you, and eighty percent goes to the, these capitals, eighty percent goes to this new capital fund. The remaining money would automatically go to the unassigned general fund automatically, correct?
Cause it's. It would, yes, yeah.
Okay, so that's what, getting rid of D just puts the money back into the general fund anyway.
Because it, and.
It just makes it available to be, it, it, exactly, it goes right into the unassigned, so then. That's where.
Maintain the ten percent.
Huh?
It would, it could, uh, it could. Potentially grow above it, you know?
Oh, it, it definitely will.
Not necessarily.
Well.
We're, we're assuming it's static. That we just keep on putting it in.
Other money goes in here too.
Well, if you just say forty, eighty percent goes here, then the twenty percent would automatically go to.
Right.
You know, it would be part of the, um, unassigned general fund.
So, if I may put a scenario out there though. We say we get rid of D, so there's really no cap. For that twenty percent, that twenty percent just goes in to the unassigned general fund. Let's say it gets up to thirteen percent some year.
Uh huh.
And somebody decides we may want to put that additional. Ten percent now, that's in there above the three percent charter into the regular budget, so now we're using. Uh, about, what, ten percent of five, so about five point four million dollars to offset. The regular budget, the operational side of the budget.
That's scary.
Which may not be available the next year.
Well, no, Mike, because we're going to have to do a charter change that says that it can't go below ten, ten percent.
And what if that doesn't pass?
Well, I think we're putting the car before the horse then.
I think that's putting the car before the horse, because we can't. We're not here to talk about a charter change, we're here to talk about an ordinance on use of the casino funding. I would agree that eventually the charter should be changed and move it up. But we're not there right now. So theoretically, theoretically, we could have a year where a huge chunk of that unassigned general fund is applied. To offset the budget, and the next year, that huge chunk isn't going to be there.
Right, but what prevents people from doing that? If you don't have a charter change and you build it up and build it up, they can still take it all the way down to three percent any year.
All in the council, all the budget committee can, yeah.
I agree with you, and I agree that there should be a charter change, but this, if we, if we're saying that we need to do a charter change before we do this. Then we shouldn't even be considering this right now.
Okay, so this is my question, and this goes to Mike Marcello. So, if, so if we say it has to go to ten percent. Does that insinuate, does this ordinance mean that nobody can take, take it below the ten percent?
No, no, the charter governs, the charter governs, so they could take it as low as three percent, right?
Mike, so what you're saying, Mike, is we could be building this up, and then an alternative budget could come along, and they take. Um. They, they take all that money.
Yeah, no, so.
What I'm saying.
No, let me answer that question first, the only people who could touch the unassigned general fund based upon last year's court ruling are two, two bodies. The budget committee. Or the council, when they propose a budget, or the school committee, I guess.
Okay, so I guess I used the wrong word. Suppose the budget committee.
Hmm.
Decides to take seven percent out of here to bring it down to three percent, they can't.
They can't, yes.
Okay, so, the budget committee, depending on who the majority is. Could do that.
Yes.
Okay.
That's why. That's why it's real, well, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't want to put words in Mike's mouth, but I think that's why we, we allocated to the capital, to prevent that from happening, basically.
To not go above that ten.
Correct.
The reality is, yes, you're right Denise, which is why I, and I think Jay, don't think we should put any percentage in that. That's just going into the general fund and not reassigned to these rate, to, to capital purposes. Because I'm concerned that somebody will take that difference. Apply it in one year, and it's not going to be available the next year, and we have a huge hole.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, you can bring it, you can put this in place. But at some point, we have to consider changing the chart.
Correct, the best, right, absolutely. Right, the best protection of, of, of that, of not that happening is changing the charter to get it up. But, but, but we can't do that by ordinance, so we're, 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 we're working on the good faith of, on trying to get to a stable period. Assuming, you know, just, just, we're just trying to get to a stable period, at least setting up the road, not the roadblocks, setting up the building blocks to get to a stable period.
Right, but I think sooner than later, we should change that chart.
And we'd have to make it part of our charter review now, otherwise it's going to be three years.
No, 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 can't the town council.
Yes.
So, made a charter change.
Yes.
At any election.
Yes.
Okay.
But it has to be a general election, doesn't it?
Which is coming up in November, guys. That's why
That's why, that's why I said, we either do it for this November or it'll be another two years after that. Am I wrong?
We do, I don't, could we do it at an FTR, Mike, because it's a financial thing?
No.
It has to be a general election, am I wrong?
That's why I'm bringing this up.
I don't know if it has to be a general election, it definitely has to be a, a townwide election, it can't be an FTR.
So could it be a special?
I think it could be a special, I'm just looking at it right now.
Well, well, let's talk about it. We did, we did charter changes at a special.
Okay.
We definitely did.
But think of the cost of that, if, if we could do it in November.
Well, that's why I'm bringing this up. I know.
Me too.
If we're going to do this, and I think we need to try to change the charter. And at least we'll make a good faith that, evident Denise is right, they could vote against it. But
Can it become part of the mandate that the current FDR Change Committee is working on?
Well, we're not going to discuss that tonight, but it could be, yes.
Okay.
Alright. Because to your point, Mike, if that charter changes, if that charter change fails, then we have the scenario you've been talking about.
Yeah, correct, but you may, but you still may get that. You just may have that. That's, that's, you could get everything but the charter change and you're in the same position, but it's, you're still, you know, you're still, you're still better off because you're not spending. You're at least attempting to blunt that from happening by having a huge swing in general revenues. That's why Mike allocated to those other two accounts, because those other two accounts would only be, the most that you could do, the most swing you could get, and I see Chris has his hand up, the most swing you get is the difference between three and ten percent.
Correct, which is a lot of money.
Right, but, but it's better than going from three to fourteen percent as Mike just suggested. If you don't, if you put the, if you put the extra money, if you take D out, that extra money automatically goes, goes to the Unassigned General Fund and that could be, as Denise said, you could get one year or two years when that gets up to fourteen, fifteen percent depending upon what the, what the revenue of the casino may be, I guess, right?
So Denise, I think, I'm sorry, Chris, I think I have an aha moment. Now that I've heard more and more of this from, with, with your discussion. Would you prefer that ten percent to start at four percent or five percent?
Yes.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Okay, but that's not the discussion we were having. So what number would we want that to be as part of the question?
Well, maybe I answered that yes too quickly.
No. Can I ask a couple of questions first? So so Mike, a couple of questions, Mike Marcello. So you just said that the only people that can touch the Unassigned General Fund would be the Town Council and the Budget Committee.
Correct.
Then I heard you slip and say something that the School Committee could as well.
No, I, I take that back because they don't have, they don't have access to that.
So my question is, could that money go into an assigned general fund account? Not an unassigned general fund account. So the money would be assigned to capital purposes, capital or debt service purposes as determined by the Town Council.
Yeah, you could restrict
That's what C does.
Yeah, I mean, you could, yeah. The, the purpose of D, the purpose of D is once you get to the ten percent on B, right, there's going to be, when I say extra money, you've, you've hit the ten percent reserve. You're still putting the eighty percent into the capital account. But now you've got extra money because you don't, you're no longer putting that extra, you're no longer putting the initial, there's no need to put the initial tranche in the, in the unassigned fund. So now you've got this money left over.
I'm not disagreeing, but if you restricted it to an assigned fund, it takes out of the hands altogether of being used to offset for any operational purposes unless the council wants to do so.
Right, and what do you, what do you
If it's unassigned, the Budget Committee can touch it and grab it and, and you could have a rogue Budget Committee and sweep it out and have a problem. If it's assigned, they can't do it.
Right, I, I understand that. So where, where would you, where would you, so you're creating another reserve account, basically?
I would create a reserve account for these capital, for these gaming monies. But that's what we already do. I'm, I guess I'm confused. So in terms of when you put it in the Unassigned General Fund, it's now available for purposes. And I get, you're trying to raise that, you're trying to raise the restricted fund from three percent to ten percent, but you're doing it by putting money in an unassigned fund. And that is now available. So that's, that's the account Denise Saret, I think can answer that question.
Okay, so the twenty percent, you're trying to raise the unassigned portion of the fund balance to ten percent. The forty and the forty are going into, just like what we really have now, a capital restricted account. You just kind of separated it between short, medium and long, but
Correct.
Honestly, it's, it's really no different than what we're doing now, except we are putting twenty percent of that into the unassigned. So
But if you took the twenty percent and put it into an assigned fund,
It's the same thing as putting it in capital.
Right, so, but it's not, then, nobody could grab it and, and take it out. Only the Town Council could do that.
Right, but it, because it would be just like capital.
Right. Right, Chris, it would simply be saying, getting rid of the twenty percent and putting a hundred percent into the, whatever we decide for the funds. No, because the issue is, you're trying to keep it reserved until such time that, that the town charter has changed from three percent. No, I'm not, I'm not, no, I'm not.
No, no.
I don't know where this all came from. I'm not trying to do that.
This, well, you know what, I, it was confusing at the get go when you think about this whole ten percent, three percent account. So we're trying to comfortably raise the unassigned portion of the general fund until it's ten percent. It's got nothing to do with the charter minimum, correct?
Correct.
Is it in the charter? There was an argument that the three percent is not in the charter. It was a Town Council policy.
The charter says it can't go below three percent, which means most people look at that. You can spend everything above, which conservative people wouldn't do.
Okay.
So it says, so it says, no money shall be taken, withdrawn or obligated from the unreserved general account if such withdrawal would cause said fund to fall below three percent of the current operating budget.
So now that only the council and the Budget Committee can allocate unassigned general fund to offset taxes, I think that we can slowly begin to build it by reserving under B of this ordinance.
It depends on who is the majority on the Town Council.
Exactly, but I think you have to look at it in terms of what's the goal here? And then the rest of it, right, the rest of it is really, C one and two is honestly no different than what's going on now. It's just eighty percent instead of a hundred percent because we've put some into the unassigned general fund. So it really is no different than what you're doing now. It's just you're breaking it up between unassigned and capital. Would you agree with that, Mike?
Which might, both, I would agree.
Either one, either Mike.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yes, I would, I would, yes.
Once we reach the ten percent, you could, you could, for all intents and purposes, keep putting it in there, but there's, you know, I, I, I think you'd be better off, once you get up to ten percent, every year we measure it. Because every year it could change slightly depending on the budget, depending on if we have any prepaid's or other things that affect the unassigned portion of the general fund balance. And then, just like you're doing now, it goes into a capital plan. And your short term, medium and long term is really all based on your priorities in your plan at the time, or, or your long term plan. And as long as we are putting money into the capital portion, that money will be available to be spent based on your plan. Does that make sense? I'm getting tired.
Denise.
Yes. Yes.
I have another question though. We put money in the general fund all the time to bring it up above three. It's, it's up above three percent quite often.
The unassigned portion is up above three percent right now.
Okay, what is it right now?
It's around six.
Okay, so
But
that's what, so it's six percent. So are we only talking the casino money is going to bring it up or are we talking?
Well, it all depends on what happens. It all depends on what happened. Now, don't forget, like, we had some things that, you know, we had, it's really hard to discuss this without looking at the pieces of the general fund, like in the financial statements. But that number changes with whatever happens, the net result of the fiscal year. So if we have a small surplus or if we have a deficit, if we have prepaid's, if we have resolutions that commit to paving. So it's really, it's, you have to look at it as a whole every year. But the last few years, we've had, because of the conservative spending, because of COVID, we have been able to continually bump that up a little bit. So that's why it's where it is now.
So Denise?
So it's not all casino money going in there because the casino money right now is restricted, so it's not in the unassigned general fund.
Right. But once we stop putting the casino money in there and whatever.
If you do that as intended with this ordinance, yeah, there's a potential for other money to also influence the unassigned generals, the, the unassigned portion of the general fund.
But it's already at six percent, you're saying, right now.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, when we calculated it Friday, it was like six percent.
So Denise that includes, that includes the restricted three percent.
Yes, yeah, so, right, so this is very little cushion. We, we're talking like less than two million dollars.
So let's, let's say, let's say it's at six percent, which is, would you say two million dollars, Denise, roughly?
No, it's, it was, goodness, it was three and a half million, was the unassigned portion.
Right, so to get to ten percent, there's, it's about a two million dollar difference to get to ten percent. So let's say we are at that same percentage, same amount, when we go into looking at casino money for next year, we do the twenty percent of three million dollars, so that's six hundred and forty. Three point two, three point two million dollars. So it comes out to, I believe, six hundred and forty thousand dollars. So that raises that to maybe seven and a half percent. It's, and it's the total percentage in there. So it's not just percentage of the casino gaming money that's going in. But I want to get back to that B. The intent of including B was to address the discussions that we have had on this council about wanting to put some towards more immediate tax relief. That, I think, is the vehicle to do that. If there's another vehicle, we can do that. I'm not a fan of it, but I understand that my council colleagues, there, there's some degree of desire to do that. It doesn't have to go to ten percent. If we keep that there as is and we can make that until it equals five percent, six percent, and then that other twenty percent goes into the capital or whatever.
Well, Mike, let me, okay, consider this. We have a charter mandate that we have to have a minimum three percent. So let's just stick with that number. At the end of the year, when Denise gets done with her magic and we go into the next budget cycle, we have a certain amount of money over that amount that's available to the Budget Committee to spend. Let's assume they spend it. Gets us back to three percent. Okay, now, if we always get the same amount of casino money every year and we only use that to replenish that fund, it'll take us six years to get to where Mike wants to, to get us at ten percent. Six years.
That's what my point is, that we only using that money to replenish the fund.
No, no, no.
No, that's if we did it that way, if that's what happened.
Don't forget, your net results for any given fiscal year will also impact that balance. So if you had an operational deficit one year, that is going to take that unassigned down. And then, you know, as you grow it, it could take longer. You know what I mean? There's always a fluctuation in that balance. It is not, oh, it is not, it's a dollar this year, so next year it's going to be five dollars and next year it will be ten dollars. It, there could be a fluctuation based on the net results of the year that we're operating in.
So I guess my point is, I was trying to make is casino revenue all by itself would take six years and it could take significantly less depending on how good a year we had, whether or not we spent the difference on and on. It certainly won't happen in year one.
Chris, do you have your hand up still?
Yeah, because I have one other thing.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, it is a Mike Marcello question. So I'm not convinced that we should keep it the same number because like the section two one oh seven, because if we replace this completely, do you lose the trail of what we did previously? By, by that ordinance just simply disappears. So I'd like to keep a record of what we've done and I don't know what the easiest way to do that is. Would you go two dash one oh seven A as the new one and then define it as saying any monies from seven one twenty one forward, excluding any monies received for FY twenty one? And I, I just, I just don't want to lose what we've done simply by
That's far, I mean, oh, so you could just change the effective date of this ordinance. So this could, this could effectively be next year. So you can start, start to, just start the new date different. I, I'm seeing your concern is that we're going to supplant the current ordinance immediately, right? So you want to, we can just delay the start of this ordinance, so it's all
I just, I just want to keep a trail of what's happened. So if somebody's going to question what we did for the FY, you know, the monies that we've already taken and allocated, you know, there's an ordinance that addresses that.
Yeah, well, the ordinance doesn't, and the ordinance doesn't disappear. I mean, it was on the books and then now it gets replaced with this one. So we have, we have an ordinance that backs it up, what we did. I've just changed, yeah.
I just didn't know if it was clear if we just gave it a different number, but the, and, and the effective date. That, you know,
You could do that. I mean, you just give it a different number and say the other one expires in the passage of this one, but it's the same, it's the same principle. You're still keeping the record of it.
No, no, I get that. I'm, I'm fine with the expiration of it that it goes away, but
What does the council want to do? Send this out for public hearing? Yes, Mike?
Make a suggestion. That I'm going to start with C, that we condense C into one account. So the eighty percent should be recorded and restricted to address capital projects as determined to be funded by the council. Are we okay with that? Okay. Then I want to go back and then also that would mean that in F, you take out C one, C two and just replace it with C in those two spots.
Yeah.
And then I want to go back up to B. I think what I'm hearing is that there, I'll ask, A, there is still some desire on the part of some council members anyway to put some To put some, make some of these funds available for more immediate tax relief. So if that's the case, I would still suggest that we set aside a percentage, whatever that percentage would be. To go into the unassigned general fund account, but we lower that threshold of ten percent down to. I'm just going to throw a percentage out there, five percent, could be four percent. Because I'm trying to get Denise, your concern that there's so much there. But whatever that percent is, we still need to then decide what are we going to do when we hit that five percent or four percent or ten percent?
Well, I I kind of like the idea that Chris came up with that, if we could figure out a way to do that.
I just. To me, that's why I just. To me, that's why we just go back into those two funds, those that that reserve that we already created. I'm not sure why we'd need to create another one.
I I just don't want it to gravitate into operations. And believe me, putting it in the capital is tax relief.
It is.
It may just not be as obvious as getting a check in your hand type of thing, but it's there.
I just, you know, from, I mean, I guess we could set, make another reserve account. I just don't understand the purpose of that if we already have one to put any excess into.
I still. I still think we should try to get to a percentage that most towns are at.
I don't disagree with you. I just don't, I hear you say that you want to, that has to be done through a charter change. Here, we can only address what we set aside and how much we can want to set aside to boost up that percentage, at least on a temporary basis.
All right. But I didn't hear any of the counselor but me say that they wanted to put it into the general fund.
I I think a small portion should go, ma- maybe, but I don't know what the what the portion should be. I I think a small portion should go directly into the general fund. It would take longer to build up the unrestricted to that ten percent that we're looking for, that five, five point four million. But I I I do think to appease some people, I do think that a small portion should go directly into the general fund for immediate tax relief. Whether that be two percent, you know, I, it it semantics in a way, but I I do think that a small portion should go directly into the general fund. For immediate dispersal of of expenses.
So I would, I would only ask two things of the treasurer and the solicitor on on the way you described that, Bill. Right now, it's simply going in there and it it would be available for use in the budget. It's not targeted. So if you're suggesting targeting, targeting it for more immediate tax relief. So must be used in the budget, for example, then we would, I think we would have to specify that.
I don't think that's what I want.
No, but I'm not listening to what Bill's saying.
You would have to include that on your revenue estimates when you put the budget together, if you want it to offset taxes. So I I just firmly believe, and I'll reiterate it and I won't say another word, is that reserving it for capital and spending it on capital. Is tax relief, is the is great tax relief. And I think that it's going to take a little bit of time for our residents and our taxpayers to actually see that. But they will see that, just look at the budget now. Your, as we wind down those capital leases, you're not going to see that anymore in the budget. And that reduces our operating expenses.
But we've always used some portion, even the town council has used some portion of that project really.
Because we had no other options.
Gaming revenue we used, what do you mean?
Not gaming evidence. See, that's where, that's where I'm really.
Yeah, the gaming revenue, we're talking about gaming revenue.
So if you put it in. So how are we going to determine? So so if we have it, if we put, like, right now, we have six thousand in there, right?
Six percent, you mean?
Oh, six percent. So that is not the gaming revenue.
No, not right now.
So we can use three percent right now for tax relief. If the budget committee or town council decided to, then you're going to put, I don't know how much of the gaming revenue in there.
To to boost up the the unassigned portion.
Gaming revenue will boost up the percentage, is that what you're saying?
No, it's gaming revenue and operations, two different things in net result. But it's all going to go into the same bucket. So then it's available to be used by the council or the budget committee in the event that they want to use it. When, when creating the budget for that given year. So you kind of have to say, okay, it's not gaming revenue anymore because we've allocated it to put it into our unassigned general fund. To boost our financial position. And until such time that you change the charter to to bring the minimum up, it it's it's available there.
That's not what they're saying, Denise. And if I don't.
That is what I'm saying.
No, if I don't understand it, no one's going to understand it because.
But Denise, I.
That's what I'm telling you.
I'm going to be very honest. I think you are obfuscating what the obvious is. I'll be very honest.
What's the obvious?
The obvious is what Denise just said, Denise Rett just said.
All right, so we already have six percent in there, guys, and we're not going to touch it.
That's that's not what she said. The issue is, we do use, every year, we have monies in the general fund reserve. We've been using. If you add gaming money to it, you're going to make that available, available to be used as well. That's that's the the crux of it. That's why I was asking to put it in an assigned account.
Yeah, I'm not going to say anything else. I I don't understand it, but that's fine, you can move forward.
Because then it would, if it's not assigned, Denise, it can be pulled out for operational use. And if it's. Right.
Yeah, once you're done, it's gone.
And the next year, if we don't have that percentage, that number of dollars, we still have a budget. We've got MOEs and we've got to meet that budget and we don't have the money to pull from. We've pulled from it every year because we haven't had casino money. We have, we, and we've had to pay for all of these capital and these.
Right now, I budgeted five point five percent increase. What we're proposing.
Okay, so.
Without capital.
Without capital, it's five point five.
Well, however, we put it in, whatever pot we put it in, whatever we call, whatever pot we put it in. I'm opposed to using the casino money for operational cost.
But then we should, then we shouldn't put in the capital fund. Because, and then we should. I mean, then we shouldn't put it in a.
General. Right, so, so. Let me try to explain this as best I can.
You you don't have to explain it to me anymore.
No, no, wait, it was just, it wasn't to you, it was just in general. The power that there was, there is, there seems to be a general consensus that we've got to get that three percent up to ten percent. Everyone seems to agree on that. All right, as Denise said, some years, so if you budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for paving and you only did fifty thousand dollars. That fifty thousand dollars left over gets poured into the undersigned general fund because it wasn't spent in the fiscal year. So that's money that automatically grows. Now to that, you are adding casino revenue by this ordinance. Because we're saying the first twenty percent gets put into there. So you could get up to, you can get up to the ten percent a lot quicker, but the fact that it's in there still means that it's available to use for. By the council or the budget commission to balance a budget, a general operating budget. Anything above three percent they could use. That's a policy decision that you made to may try to get it up to ten percent. But because of the defect in the charter or the charter provision, it's still available, three to ten percent is available. Anything above three percent is available to use as general revenues. I mean, as as monies for the general budget that could be directly used for tax increase. So put that aside. Other than that money, the rest of it can only be used for capital. The dilemma is, is that you seem now to be, everyone seems to be worried about what happens if you tap into the general unassigned balance one year. And that you don't recoup it the next year because the the maximum that you're only going to put in there, a maximum, assuming. But the history is you only get three point two million. So the maximum you put in there every year would be six hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's the maximum. That's the historical maximum you could get. So if you're, if that six hundred and forty thousand gets you at ten percent. Just assume that, okay, whatever money's left over, six hundred and forty plus, whatever's in there, it's a ten percent. It's the additional money that Mike then puts into the capital pot to prevent you from getting so high. Like fourteen percent, that you could take the difference between three percent and fourteen percent and really create yourself in a big hole. So it's kind of our self-regulating check, but I agree with you, the council has the right, or the budget committee has the right to take that money out above three percent. The only way, the only way you prevent that from happening is get rid of the building up to ten percent and put all the money in a restricted account to be used some other way. You could say, I'm making a restricted account for twenty percent every every year to be used for a direct tax relief. You know, you're going to get at least six hundred and forty thousand dollars from that amount. You can do that.
Ideally, you do that after you've got a charter change.
Yes.
Ideally, you do what, put the six four hundred and forty?
You you put this money in for that, after you have that charter change and have met the goal.
Right, well, that's right.
And again, if that's what this council wants to do, that agrees with where I thought we should have started from.
Right.
But that's not, there was more discussion going on than that in our previous meetings about wanting to at least try to find a way. To put some towards budgetary tax relief, let's call it that. And the only way I knew, and there could be a different way, is by doing what we have here. So if we don't want to do what we have here at all, then we just take that out and we put that twenty percent and spread it out. Or not spread it out, we put it in the in C below if we change it to just one account. If we do want to do it, then we have to figure out what makes the most sense. If we want to wait until we hopefully get a charter change, then we just take out B. Or eliminate to some lower number. Or limit it to some lower number.
I'll go on record as, as I've said it before. I'm willing to compromise, but I was always proponent of putting it all into a restricted account, a capital restricted account. That concludes.
That's the carol.
As that. Which is the current res, which is the current ordinance that precludes, you know, all this rating of accounts and worrying about what a town, other town council will do or any of that. But I also think.
But Jay, what that doesn't do is doesn't grow your three percent to the ten percent.
Well, I was going to get to that. I still think we need a charter change to get the restricted, you know, to get the reserve up to a reasonable, sensible amount. And then we can always change the ordinance to match the charter, which is easy to, relatively easy to do. The other, the other method is hard. But compromise is good.
So if we don't want B, I have a suggestion. But I need to know if we want B. All right, I'll put it out there because I'm not. So in A, we extend that last sentence. After entitled the casino gaming fund account, take out the period, add for the purpose of addressing capital projects as determined to be funded by the council. You strike B, you strike C, you strike D. You have E casino, casino gaming funds only, which will become B. Casino gaming funds only can be allocated and expended after the fiscal year in which the town receives a revenue, with the exception of any emergency need. Upon a super majority vote, five out of seven council members of the town council. For F.
Oh, go ahead.
What, for F, you.
Why are you taking B out?
Because it's unnecessary if you take out B.
No, why are we taking B out?
B or B as in boy?
Yeah.
Okay, because I asked that question, nobody answered, so I'm trying to move forward.
Oh, well, I don't want to take B out. I don't, if other people want to, but.
But then I, Denise, I don't know what you want to.
Can I ask a question of Denise Rett? Denise, is within thirty days after the end of fiscal year adequate for you to come up with the final numbers?
Yes, because those final numbers are, has nothing to do with the audit. The casino gaming revenue is accounted for weekly. So within thirty days of June thirtieth, as long as I get the sports betting money as I have been on time, there won't be a problem, no.
So these receipts are just casino or let, I'll get off the casino, top of gaming revenue.
Right, has nothing to do with the audit, which normally we wait for that for other reasons, but thank you for asking, but plenty of time.
Well, I know the rest of it takes a while.
Donna, did you have your hand up? I saw Donna's hand go up.
Uh, yes, I was just wondering how much longer this is going to go on. We've got more stuff to do, that's all. Nothing seems to be clicking here.
So I'm just going to make a statement, I want some money for tax relief. So that's why I don't want to take B.
Tell us, Denise, what do you want in there?
Exactly what's in there, but I don't want it, I. I like B, change the percentage, but then I don't want to put the rest of the money in capital. I want it to stay in the.
So then if you do that, then that amount is going to grow above ten percent to, let's, whatever, above whatever percent we say. It's going to grow without any constraints on it and could balloon the amounts put into the operational side in a any given year. And then leave a short significantly the following year.
That's why we need a charter change.
But.
That's why we need.
Nobody see. I know that at least four or five of us are are agreeing with you on that. But that's not what this is about.
But it has to be what it's about.
But you can't do that right now.
I think the plan is that we have to, we do that, that this, this has to work with a charter change in November.
So what happens if there's no charter change, then what happens?
Well, then we have to go back to the. Well, then we have to go back to the drawing board and change the ordinance.
So what do we do on August first when we have new casino money to? To decide how to work?
We put it in the, I mean. We, we put it in there, but no one's going to spend it because the budget's already done.
So, Michael, can I?
The charter change in November. No one's going to spend that. It's just going to sit there until we out the election. In November.
And we can't, we can't spend any casino money. That we make this year.
Yes, we can, my.
No, we can't because we won't have an ordinance to do so.
No, we do this ordinance. Okay, and that money is going to sit there because it's not going to be spent in August when we get it.
Okay, I can't agree to that. You decide what you want to do, Denise, because I'm, I, I've done my best effort. I've done my best effort with this. No, you decide what you want the council to vote on.
Why doesn't somebody make a motion and then I'll vote? No one's making a move on this.
Because we're trying to come to some level of agreement.
I don't think you're going to, I don't think that's going to happen, so I think it's just majority rules. If you have a majority that wants to do something, then do it, guys. If somebody makes a motion, let's see if it passes.
All right. I guess, I guess the issue is, do we want to make a motion to vote on? This as it is written? Or? Do we want to make a motion to? Approve it with. Some changes and then what are the changes going to be?
Well, remember that. We have to go to public hearing too.
Yeah, the only, here's the only thing that you could do. I mean, you can do many things, but you can change it now and go to public hearing. You can, you could, you could agree to go to public hearing as is and reserve your right to change it at, at, after the public hearing to see what the public, maybe. Maybe the public agrees with Mike, maybe they agree with me, I, I'm not me, but. You know, Denise, I don't, I don't, I don't know what the, what the public will agree, but i- if. So. I, I don't know, I mean, so it's. You could do it, you could do it that way. You could, you could send it to the public as is, and maybe you want to hear what the public has to say.
I want to, I can't agree to sending it as is after this conversation.
All right.
Well, then the other thing we could do is table it.
To what?
Further discussion, but.
We're just, until we have something concrete, we're going to go round and round in circles.
I think we are.
Why don't you just send it to pub, pub, public hearing as is, it'll move it forward a little bit.
I won't. But that's me.
Make them, I can, I'll second it. Is that a motion, Mike Burke?
To what?
To send, send as, as written.
No, I'm saying I won't. Here's my motion. Here's my motion. That we send an amended version. Of this to public hearing to read as follows. Section A remains the same, except for at the end. You put in for the purpose of addressing capital projects as determined to be funded by the council, period.
Can you just go a little slow, Mike, because you're writing this down?
Yep.
For the purpose of our.
Adding. For the purpose of addressing capital projects as determined to be funded by the council. I'm lifting language from below and putting it up.
Okay.
B is stricken.
Has a TV on.
Strike B. Jay, do you have your TV on?
Oh.
Okay. Strike B, strike C. Strike D. B stays the same.
See, if you're waiting, I don't.
Yep. First sentence is the same.
D stays the same?
He is stricken. He isn't, dog is gone.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Oh, dead silence here. E stays the same. F, first sentence is good. Second sentence. Who?
Joe, is that you? Got a TV on?
So just put yourselves on mute, that's all.
He's muted.
So E stays the same. F. Stays the same for the first sentence, the second sentence. Would read. I'm starting at where it says town administrator and the school committee to discuss capital needs that may be funded through. The. Restricted casino gaming fund account. Any funds appropriated. Shall be done through a resolution. You can strike, so be any funds appropriated. Cross out from C one and C two. Shall be done through a resolution, resolutions of the town council.
So do I have a second?
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
I've done, yeah.
I think we keep the rest of F.
Yeah.
The ordinance, we keep the sentence, the ordinance repeals what's there now. And we make the effective date July one, twenty twenty-two.
So we're not going to put any in the general fund?
That's my motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
Did we remove B again, please?
Yep.
Yes, we removed B, we removed C, we removed D.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Jay?
What?
Vote.
Oh, vote, yes.
Bill?
I, I think I'm going to say no.
Deb?
I'm going to say no.
Donna?
No.
Joe?
No.
And I'm a no.
Yes.
Oh, Mike, I'm sorry.
Can I respectfully ask, Madam President, that you? Put something else before so we can consider it a later date?
I don't have time to do that, so I won't be doing that.
Then I'm not sure what, how we're going to spend casino money this year.
Somebody else can.
This next year.
Yeah, I think, I think, if, if you just keep the current orders, we just have to change the expiration date, I guess. I'll, I'll have a look at that if you're not going to move forward on something like this, but we'll, I can get back to that.
I'm going to make a motion. Based on what we have here, the casino gaming revenue. A stays the same. We did not add the, we did not add the sentence for the purpose of addressing capital. Projects. B stays the same for now. C. Is combined. Any remaining funds after the application of section B shall be recorded by the town treasurer as follows. Eighty percent. Shall be restricted. Shall be recorded and restricted to address. Short term and capital term projects that's determined to be funded by the town council. I strike D. And then an F. One sentence, two sentences.
F, F, you only have to just reference to C instead of C one.
Right, right.
And then what happened to, just to ask you, so what happened to E? Did you strike E? You don't need to strike E.
No.
Okay.
I think this was the original, one of the original. Edits that Mike Burke made.
All right, what's your effective date?
Well, it'd have to be when the other one sunsets. It'll be June, right?
It could be soon.
I don't know, I don't know what Bill's effective date is.
June first, twenty twenty-one. When the, when the other ordinance expires.
Twenty twenty-two. Twenty-two, you're right, Ted.
Twenty-two. amended to twenty-two.
The other one expires on June thirtieth.
July first. July first, twenty twenty-two.
So July, I amended to July first, twenty twenty-two. That's it.
Do I have? So that's saying that eighty percent goes into this. Capital. Fund. And the other twenty percent, we're not saying where it goes, but it ends up in the general.
It goes in the unassigned general.
Unassigned general fund.
Without a cap, correct, Bill? It can keep on going in there, ad infinitum, right?
Um, just the way B reads, uh, you want me to read it? Within thirty days after the end of the fiscal. Town, the town treasurer shall record twenty percent of all receipts for the fiscal. For the prior fiscal year to the unassigned general fund until such. Account equals ten percent of the current fiscal year's operating budget.
Right, but then you took out D, correct?
I took out D.
So then, once you hit ten percent. That twenty percent has to go somewhere.
I think it automatically goes to the general fund, right?
Keep on going.
Yeah, keep going.
And it could go higher and higher, that's my point. It could be forty percent. Theoretically.
Right. Or, or until the ordinance is changed again.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, if I don't get a second, it's, the point is moved.
I have a second.
I'll second it.
So the discussion, I just think we should send it out to the, to the public to see what they have to say.
So this just modifies it. We still have to have a second motion to send it to public hearing, right, Michael?
Uh, yeah.
Discussion, I also think that we need to work on. A charter change. By November. To bring that up to the ten percent. All right, so I have a motion and Joe seconded.
So further discussion, I just want to be. Again, point out that by not having. A ceiling in there and by having that ten percent ceiling, which we had talked about, at least lowering that. We're putting ourselves in dangerous territory in terms of. Having way too big of a. An opportunity. To, um, front load. A budget one year through these funds and the next year have to over budget. Over tax taxpayers or significantly reduced services. To get to our budget. And I'll give an example. When I lived in Milford, I was the. Chair of a. Big, very large condominium. We had lots of accessories, indoor pools and things like that. And for years they went, went without a, a fee increase. To the point where everything was deteriorating. So we had to give them, we had to put on them about a two hundred percent fee increase in one year. To address that. And that, you know, that carried forward. And people didn't like that. It happened. Eventually, there was enough votes for. But. It was a huge hit. Where if we would have done it more gradually, addressed things along the way. We wouldn't have been in that position.
So you're saying?
Well, we are addressing it with the capital. Reserve of eighty percent.
I stand by what I said about that unassigned general fund amount.
Okay, let's see if we can, let's see what happens. Um, any other discussion? Bill?
Yes.
Take a vote. All right, um, Jay?
We're voting on the modifications, correct?
We're vote, voting on Bill's. This is, we're voting on it, but just to go out.
We're, we're voting on the modifications. We don't have a motion before us to send it to public hearing yet.
Can I, can I just, for two seconds, Chris, we're, we're, we're recording this, correct?
It's being recorded on YouTube videos.
If this passes, Joan and I are going to have to go back and make sure we have it cut it right, but okay, thank you. Sorry.
Okay, so, uh, no.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Deb?
No.
Donna?
No.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So it's four, three. So I think we should table it and, um. We should table it. Does anyone want to, I? Work on this. I don't have time because I'm doing contracts and other things, so.
All right, so who's?
My best shot.
You, you'll continue working on it?
No, I've given it my best shot.
Okay, yeah, I know. So does anyone else want to give it a shot?
I'm game.
Okay.
So how, how did you, Mike, how did you guys work on this before?
We met for about two hours the other day.
Okay, I'm.
Two and a half.
I'm game if, uh. Mike and Denise and Chris are.
We excluded Chris last time, but we can keep him in last time.
All right.
That's fine, we could, if we do it, as long as it's not a majority of the council, we can do it through Zoom or whatever. It was actually very helpful to have Denise with us, and I think that.
Oh, absolutely. I don't want to do anything without talking to her.
All right. We can, we can work on it. Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
Well, I need a vote to table it.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, sorry.
I need a motion to table it.
I'll make a motion to table it. Second.
So motion to table. Um.
Do we want to drop dead date on this?
No, just tell me when you're ready to put it on there. Well, it has to be a dropped dead, dead date of July first, but.
Yeah, we haven't got a lot of time.
Okay. The motion's been made by Jay, second by Joe. Um, any further discussion? Mike, I want, Mike Burke, I want to thank you and your committee to work on it. But obviously. It still needs tweaking. All right, um, Jay?
Uh, yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
Donna?
Um.
It just to table.
I'm, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna abstain from the whole thing.
Okay. Um, Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay.
What's my agenda?
Um, discussion impossible vote to refer renaming of Spruce Street. Maple Street, Highland Street, Hemlock Street. Beach Street to Planning Board for recommendation. The planning board asked us. For this motion so that they could work on this.
Madam President, any idea why they want to do this?
Because, because there's other streets named this. Am I right, correct?
Yeah, under the Stafford Heights, there are a number of paper streets. They're not roads. They're just proposed roads. Mostly, uh, there are a couple of roads in that, um, that we also need to look at as well. But Spruce, Maple, Highland, Hemlock and Beach. And it turns out that, um. Stafford Heights is actually on both east and west side of Stafford Road, which I was unaware of. Joan did a little bit of research and dug that up, but. It creates a problem for EMS issues for, um, you know, GPS locations for. Notification for, for homes and things like that. We, we definitely can't have duplicate names of roads, so. I think it's important that we send this back to the planning board to take a look at. How do we go about rectifying this so that we don't have duplicate names?
Yeah, that was my question, Chris, because being on the fire department for years. Anybody who submitted. Names for streets that had to be approved. And if there was anything that was even close to a. Duplication or resemblance. It was usually kicked out and they made them. Change the name. That's why I'm. Questioning why they wouldn't do this now, you know?
Well, Stafford Heights goes back quite some time. I think it goes back to like nineteen oh six or something like that, that. So these definitely need to be taken a look at, uh, and it came about because there was actually. Think in the last year or two years. Two buildings that were constructed for homes. And the, the, came reason for the fire department, how they get their street name. So one of them was on Roy Street, which is another road that. I think is one of these that we, we're trying to determine how Roy Street came about. And then another one that we're looking at is also Bullock Avenue. And I have the name of that one came about as well. Because all those platted lots in there, even though they're tiny, tiny little lots, with no real streets on, they're all paper, they all have street names. And there are other roads in town that have very similar street names.
This is also gonna carry over into things like deeds and
Yep.
legal documents and everything.
So I, I think we're just looking for the planning board to give us a recommendation on how to rectify this?
Yep, that's what we're doing and that's what they asked for, Donna.
Um. The planned street name, the existing street name, uh, it's going to go to the planning board? I don't, I don't see any need to, to use the same names. I think it's a bad idea. They need to start from scratch with new names, period.
Well, I think that's what they're planning on doing.
Yeah.
Alright.
But they need our permission. I don't understand this at all, but yes.
I think there's a statute that allows the, to make a recommendation to the town council, but I think once that street is named, only the town council can rename it. They want, they want to duplicate it and so they want to look at it so they can maybe give you recommendations as to what they should be named. I'm assuming that's what they want, I didn't talk to them.
What I'm wondering, Mike, is, are we also gonna have to send like certified letters to every one of these lot?
Absolutely, yeah, but you're gonna have to, there's gonna be a lot of changes there.
Yeah.
I mean, people are not gonna like the name of this street that they lived on for years and now be changed.
Thankfully, many of these were never built. There, but there are a couple of them that we're still looking at.
It went to the planning board. I was there at that meeting, I think Deb was there and Jay, right? Went to the planning board and they said they didn't want to do anything with it unless we told them that they wanted us to address that, them to address that. Am I right?
Think of it, yeah.
It was something like that.
I don't remember that at all. I don't think.
Well, you might not have been there then.
I don't.
Was. Somebody was there with me. Alright.
What do we have to do? Vote on this or?
Yeah, just, just, just to refer, it's gonna be good.
We have to vote to refer this to the planning board.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we refer the renaming of the tree streets to the, uh, planning board.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor, Jay?
Yes.
Bill?
Yeah.
Dave Robert.
Mike?
Yes.
Hi Dave, um, Deb?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Hi Dave.
Good evening, everyone, how are you?
Okay.
How are you?
Tired, right?
Yes.
Um, taxes that's there. Gonna look at your budget, everybody have it in front of you?
On page seven?
Yep. Oh, Dave isn't up.
Considering the, uh, the lead hour and such, um, my, my budget is pretty much level funded from last year. Um, there's a couple of line items where there's decreases. So I'm not sure if you want me to go line by line, or if anyone has any specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions? Now, the salary is already, that's what he's that's contractual, right? That's what he's getting paid.
That's what it was based on the last evaluation review that we did last year.
Okay. And then, any increases? The web hosting?
I don't have the web hosting. Um, in my budget, the only increase is the software maintenance and, uh, the current software that we utilize, tax administration software. Um, they sent out a note that the software this year is gonna cost us four thousand seven ninety-two, uh, so that's why there's a, uh, increase. And that line item, I also buy miscellaneous, uh, computer items such as keyboards and mice and that type of thing.
It's only up by five hundred?
Correct.
But in our, I'm sorry, it, it was Chris gave us, there is an increase. Um, web hosting is up to thirty-six hundred and.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah. That's the year, yes. I, I was, our website, uh, yeah, the GIS web hosting. Um, we currently utilize Main Street Maps as a GIS vendor. And they were recently purchased by another GIS company called CAI. And having discussions with them, they are, uh, trying to keep the annual, uh, maintenance agreement, uh, amount the same. Uh, but they said that there might be a slight increase, so that's why I just added a little bit of extra money in there just in case. I don't foresee that actually happening. Uh, they, they've been very, uh, good to work with, uh, so far. In fact, they're gonna be building me an additional website for the revaluations at no charge. Um, so, um, I, I don't think that's gonna be necessary, but just in case.
Any questions?
Okay.
No.
Yeah, wait a minute.
What?
I, I, I thought, uh, software, um, and anything to do with computers was gonna be paid out of the care or opera funds or, I remember seeing that on the paper, am I incorrect on that?
If there was anything new that was gonna upgrade the existing systems, these are existing, uh, systems that David already has. That this is what, we're, we're not taking all of our annual maintenance out to pay it out of opera. That would be, and it would improve the systems.
Okay, because, um, we had, um, Tony in front of us and, uh, David with this new system, was, was that paid for or did we? All we have funds?
That's an entirely new system, that has nothing to do with this.
Okay, okay, so many systems, alright.
Any other questions? Right, David, you also do the re, we, we value restricted?
Uh, correct, uh, that revaluation account. Um, if you, uh, remember, we, uh, set aside an annual appropriation that goes into a restricted account. And, uh, taking a look at the forecast for the, uh, statisticals, the, uh, full evaluations and any outside appraisals such as what we did for the power plant. Um, I took a forecast of the next several years and if we fund the account right now at fifty thousand dollars per year, um, we should be in, in good shape as far as paying for those, uh, revaluations and any outside appraisals. We had been historically utilizing somewhere around forty-five thousand, um, and such, um, but, you know, with anticipated increases, um, I, I, I think fifty thousand would be a comfortable number to use.
Any, any questions? Alright, that's it, Dave. Right?
Alright, thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Tony?
Coming in. That's on page eighty?
Page eight, so Tony, you have a decrease in your budget? No.
I do, um, I put the collection line item down by a thousand dollars because, um, last year, the because of COVID, we weren't really doing a lot of, um, you know, turning a lot of accounts over to the collection agency. And the results I'm seeing are slow down on the accounts that they are collecting on. So anticipating that to kind of trickle down, I did reduce that line item. However, on this month, I did turn, um, approximately five hundred accounts over to the collection agency, so I'm hoping that maybe towards the end of the, um, fiscal year, I may see an increase in collections, but that's why I did bring that number down and everything else stayed pretty consistent.
Tony, is that? Uh, five hundred accounts to sharp increase or is it about average?
That's about average. I turned over two years of motor vehicles and, um, some tangible business accounts that like nothing was turned over last year, so I tried to turn over the two years of the motor vehicles this year.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, a, any other questions? And the other account is tax sales, right, Tony?
Yes. So that account, um, I kept consistent with the two thousand dollars, um, this year. We, you know, we did have to dip into that to run our tax sale and we, um, used seventeen hundred of it. So I figured that it would be a safe bet to keep that number the same and, um, hopefully we won't use it, but it'll be there if we need it.
Alright. Any questions? Alright, thank you, Tony.
Thank you, have a great night.
You too. Alright, the next, the next. Why did we put senior citizens?
Senior center.
Senior center.
Not here, but I, I can go through most of it, I think it's on.
I didn't know we were doing this, I thought we were just doing the two.
Okay, well, we can, I, we can defer it to another time.
Well, I was, I, I put it on Saturday, you think that would be alright?
Saturday, alright.
Okay. Alright, um, town clerk discussion impossible vote to award contract to election data services for re, re district, we.
Re precincting.
Re precincting consulting services.
Uh, yes, back in, uh, December, um, we went out, um, requested going out for advertising for the precinct management consulting services. Uh, and we got the responses for the RFP that went out. And we'd like to award the contract to election data services for their re precincting consulting services. Uh, they were the low bidder. Um, they are actually the, um, company that was used by the state for the redistricting. Um, and the funding for this project will, uh, come out of the elections, a restricted account.
Any questions from the council? Like to entertain a motion?
Well, I'll make a motion that we award the contract to election data services for re, re precincting consultant services.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, Bill?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Alright, um, this guy, you're welcome, Joan. Discussion on scheduling special meeting regarding American Recovery Funds, um, Chris is gonna present something with, um, and he wants our opinion on it and a possible vote. I was thinking March twenty-first at seven PM. Is everyone available? It's out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think it's our off Monday, right? Yeah.
I believe so, yeah. So, what time, seven o'clock on?
Yeah. March twenty-first. Right, and I don't need a vote on that or anything. Alright. I'd like to, um, entertain a motion to go into closed executive session, councilor president, town administrator and Island General Law, forty-two, forty-six, five-eight-two, collective bargaining update on I, I A F F local seventeen oh three negotiations.
So moved.
Okay. Okay, uh, Jay?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Deb?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, I didn't forget anyone, right? No. Alright, Andrew, we're going into executive.